Eh, ngubingalele uza kwe tu, siabong. Eh, u misheke ssebenzana, ssebenzana ilaa. Gitavangu tige, oh, ngisotela pambidis kubere. Ngisbonili kulza mla eh, boesa eh, sokulu. Eh, ngitavuntu nyuso longale. Ngitela sese ngala ngapambeli kulungoba vele eh, izo onese akipenele etulela, juu bonange, abashonijobe la ngapambeli. Ngitala ssondele kulze tu, abapate sobe tu. In beniti ngonkole, lakishala ndabo. Siabongakakulu. Agaisbone, ehatink, corner? Nazoke eh, reinkonyen? Ow, mbosha ngatyaasroba, mbosha kusukumilionke. Eh, msumbe ponchis? Mtoni? Mbengzo poklaya guba deko, sinoma ka ebeso poklayega, oguba anekomsumbe. Agitinyasu makai inseswa le msumbe? Agitinyasu? Ya, asina mbanke kwa seme msumbe. Ngisotela ngapambidis tale, goba sesi shawis kati, befabe skalengo nine. Corner distele senseywa yola, abapete, guzo zonki tese nseka, olanoplaka klaka lo wopcona. Banestelo, ngibati izolo kebengengeko na, mkuutwakotoa konu kupa samse woba corner. Wepaya bantu, bebé, sina bechala ngemovwa, sine kumuki ndabo, lesa kesbe sekyakrishe. Tu, ngitala, we must avoid charging our cellphones anyway inside here. Bastel kuti, we must avoid charging our cellphones, sengashachi laklin ndaoles, la ngaparati. Siabongakakulu. Ngisotela kutige si vumelaane, corner, si tataje, si tataje injela, ebegwenseka ngayo izolo, no ma besengeko toa, I know kuti, beskuluma pe municipality, and wireless kuluma pe municipality, siso tata five pe municipality, sisa mukuti, ngiyazigenza kama tota shesha sugume, manbona yudni mato tase sumen batatu, ngabsa kubera intetele besfazane banke nenabo. Siess one, let's try to balance it. It can't be eh 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 all men's show. Let's also allow the women to 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 stand up and talk, okay? So, kushutige sotala, maskala, sotala, siku lume, uksuka ehatink, then sese reinkonyen, oh, no ma goba, agenchi kekanje, hatink, msumbe, mtoni, besesbuangof freeway, sese le reinkonyen. Eh, abashonishwa, ngibingalela, abashonishwa, eh, abasho we NSOP, National eh, ngubingalele osomlomo, we KZN Legislature eh, utatewe tu eh, u boys, la ngagubo rekivu nde. In kané zitu anti nde. Sibingalela abashonishwa eh, amalu nga eh, esham intetu sakazul natal, officials from National eh, officials from eh, KZN Legislature, mayas, nazi mayas etu skelile wapaya, officials from local municipalities goba corner, eh, mayas from other municipalities in KZN. Sibingalele umpagati wonke, okona la, kakulgazi, onga panskooku, sanbonan. Eh, makoni ngume kuiile ngambigeela, ngangia kulisanga ngambingelela. Kushutige, all protocols observed, angeti sonjali slung, eh? Ya eh, siabongakakulu ke, uselogo jomeptazile u misheke la kuti, ulmen, no ulmen okona manje, aufanu ulmen wabe konakala, la gwa kwasu kuti, makto ulmen awaz nukutu ban do, manje sliela na onango ulmen da, yoona ongo ulmen do, ni kuluma no ulmen, manje indenzoba ni kuluma ni nipeksengo ulmen, apendu ulefuto ulmen. So, yonanzele la ke manje, kuluhulmen umusho kore ekpilo angayo manje, ngimanen ngiyashu yudmuusha. It's from 1994 actually. Bati, ngzamunthazel kuti, impilo, ya xincha aban ngono kakulu, mvavonke na kahulmenu entando eni ngi eh, oho lo kongolos. Wa xincha goba ngono kakulu goba, sese agwazutnatsi mpagati, sese kulmalengengo, no ulmenu etu, aspendu ulefuti smegi kalozetu, ngentoni iponje, no bangabe i na ekito zo tmo i kuluma, kutawa ya bonare, na ifense itu nosila yokebopa. Uma ka, agesilu zo nbopo zo laleli i kalu ikinkulmo zen, wea ngoma moutaanda, wea kalaza moutaanda, agu kuvengeywa, siess one angeti. Sotela sese nganjalo ke eh, gizo. Angasno mu mu fisusho something before kubere, oh, oh, okay, okay. Eh, maya ngboni zal, ta kana ngosutimoo seslap, ngoko, ngboni zal. Seso agit. Ngitala nimne ngonpopo, goba, askoko, mikono ngijamekona, nguna na fisugublungi sa before start. Ngitala nimne ngonpopo.
Thank you. Ah, clarity, clarity.
Ngelagenseso agit.
Ngubingalele eh, clarity impartial eh, ngikuzwe kuti uzo tata five pa omaspal, ngoweni ngila bandabala eh, bengzo ktele kuti, u five mnane kubandabala, and suges ndawene zshugile eh, ngokhal, so bengzo ktele kuti eh, if you say u five, clambu round one, uzo bakonu round two, ifungeko round two, stralutate ten pe municipality, ilas stralund, gabon.
Ngisotela kange, no, ngayezu seso agit la, para bangasazi shuto ban eh, gotwa, ngisotela kange, goba, lenje laske sese benzese zolo. Agesiba mbende sbonu kuti, goba skonasonge la, sbonu konanlasoka lazakon. No kuti sza menutmasuguma eh 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 gomaspala, ngabe se kula wajabile watina yoto, za unma abese isukumilu watuan, angabsa suumuni watuan, suumuni nganjalo nganjalo. Patarestade lenje la izolo, sibo nukuti ngijamege, seso ambasfige ngayo, sikonasonke la, makono ngahambikage la skalaza konasoglungi sa kuti. Ngitala ngomuso abantu, ngisotela u two minutes eh, pe umuntu. Ngitala ngomuso abantu eh, umama la pa besegopambe, ngitala masuguma se go go me tuze ngonpopo, isla ngelane kon, umama eh, usisale movea, yesi swen eh, no ngala gwa. Blungilosama, sese skisi lisaluse, osama. Yes, na, ngupu tina wapaya. Umuso abantu jaoles kuluman gao. Konisalje gisito lain, langbonka ten ngala lain, konisalje sanga ngava lain. There's a hand there, yes, there's a hand somewhere there. Okay, asidule, na, see. A movea. Osa, it's five now, five, alright. Ngitelu kuti. Ngitelu kuti la baba la wapaya, la panje, ba paramisamsumba, hamisameso la pasbon, and please also 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 check leave their hands on those who are on the overflow. Okay, so is I, asina abu six to five eh?
Ngabingalela.
Yes, telunga lema.
Ngabingalela, ikama unosipomkize ewat nine eh, sinenkenga msumu abantu, yo kuti, unesengeliphezu luloktujulo abantu, and injela abantabatu julo angayo, asazu no ma i konai ini ngobeke la pambili kosa akbo shwamu, tustelu kboza emapoiseni, u kuti, bati nengale enteyense kala pehatinki, dekate wenzegema tolopen, manje se abantosebe tujulo ngishwe makai impali, umuntu ka tujulo nje eh itolopen, kotakupe du tetiminita emapoisenga bonaga alinda weni eskame. Oguesmili, sikela ukesi iswe, ngentaba ya macho intu kuti, ya pelela pindaba kuti, abantabata isuchala, babena malaisen zingo goba, izanga lokta isuchala liphezu laka kulue ndawenza se makai, kubekona abantabali malayo, ba edimalale macho inti, nisitelu kuti baskontrolele indaba yoka isagochala. Ogues tatu, sikela u kuti ku fusaleluwe ama forums, ayke asalegelela kakulu, ngesikati wa kati sekunge twa indaba yesi impi, uguze wese izanga lokkebengu ehatinki, siyapela ehatinki, gabong.
Siabong.
Ngitala ngubingalela, onontan zawa ndatane msumu abantu ewat ten. Ngines telo eh, ngitungiu entenge orum ya se waten. U kuti siyakela sibo nukkebengu bubningi kakulu, masifone emapoiseni, kuvefune kuti nitazu kuti, kondumdeseshonile na, afigele iti kakulu. Siyesati masutokwa kwe orum, satisinai ndaweni ngani, es ngatungelelu anje yoke, abantu abazosala corner, kubenama poisa zoba konewat ten, uguze skuazu kulegelelek. Nano kuti sasi nabantebebe ngama volontia, ala social crime eh, konusisawai konowashona, azangindawaya ke fusaleluwe, no mio bekonaba yegi, so kanibabo nabantebe sitimasifona, no mas tumela gubo izindo sibone zshesh, ngabong.
Gabong.
Angbingalele eh, abanga pambili, ku kefasawakate eh, waten, u msumu abantu. Eh, bengzo tela kakulu eh, bokona eh, ubesen kavile kakulu uses, gotwa bestela u kutige ngempela ma ku fusaleluwe, i crime prevention. Goba yona ebeyi, ewo usizo, kuma wati kakulu eh, na win dunna zinkos. Eh, sitela moku eh, ya ba, u kuti u, ubabu u, ubaba u tere, owayenza wa ya ba, u kuti ngempela i velele eh, i ukayi. Kwabonaga no u kuti ngempela iasiza kakulu, manje, no maschaila emapoisa, ayabuzu kuti ubani, sikela induna uma ku xayon, gongono goktoa eh, goktoa eh, eh, we, we coming safe eh, bebé shesha kakulu. Ngama ya masia, goba se iperile manje eh, na sesu golwen na na ngonyango, olanga lokoperile, katoa eh, ma gube, sesu golwen uguze ngempela abantu, ba pepe sesu golwen, gotwa kwabonaga nukutiti na ngana apawa mati eh, u kutato usiwe, no ma lewa nyuso, uguzuwa zu kuti ngempela wabradhi, uhamba nje, amale noza eh, u kibeli ama transport ama tatu, uguzu ofira, bestela u kuti, ma ku fusaleluwe eh, i, eh, i voluntia, social crime, uguze ngempela abantu ba pepe, na yole asehatinki, ispatarabi, o guba kubekona izulu lezala, tujulo abantu siabong.
Siabong. Ma, ma, manla lela rase, ubaba oyashu tumamo mka vile eh, nenda ssho yoka kulgaze, sese sho mama, ingoba pume watina yoto, ingago bestela kuti, i, omaso umbolo mutu wati ako, usalusu teto ngono ngijamege, goba, sinaali tuba lo kuti, ogu yes ngaxongo, sikpale sikuse la petafleni eh, sikuse konu kui kalazo, kuzofira ngijenge, goba gungjalo, guba 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 pateso, sotela nganjalo, siabong, ngelagenseso agit.
Eh, angbingalele ngukulu kuzjoba, kubuhuli bonkopkona skateli makosin, ikama kuachwe kaya, uza nimpilo wakamemela ehatinki msumu abantu ka wad seven. Nakuge eh, mpatu othelo, ba makai, ugu sida kakulu ehatinki. La wapaya ewat three, used to be wad seven, unes ngalasi nda, es balige kakulu, no ma kunesku ngo, es balige kakulu. One is kungo sese mfundu itunia primary school eh, bizoge Princess Noque, nza? Used to be give hope, ipaga te lathin, etuzi wa Hansmerenske Weza Village. Opinde futi corner la pana, unefacilitia ka Department of Health, ogwi Weza Clinic, na yofuti eh, nearby i Weza Somil, izinzele zombili. Past late lathin, then lapababundusi, te wazi i police station eh ya i corner la payana, eh, ya ibizwa ngeweza station. Kule eje ngigiona, I cannot be social u kuti, kwenza galan uguze kxuswe yon. Gotwa, ukula kwe zanga lokkebengu, glabantu ana ba eskolene kivna, la bazalbetwa ba yeweza, kwenzeke kakulu kakulu after kxusoka liya police station. Then siso trelage babundusi kuti, if uzi corner izinzele, I give fusaleluwe liya police station ya se weza, because beilegelela kakulu kulezi zintoliz. Uma gunguti kunes nginamba, shampesenzu kuti otelo othelo. Sio trela laba eh, babshomoga, abaga safety and licensing, abafa kwe eskolene, shampi eh, ubuhuli butu extend the duties for them, because, aguktanga kakulu kwe zini ndaba suwakzona, mshampi abantu anbanga, baxanga bezama be kalabenge nishatin, izona izetulu sitasifezin, kaut babshomu kuyasbona, list is calling destroy, uhamba ngomkuakku eight twenty four twenty eight mumsuke hatinku, we as late weza, siabongakakulu.
Siabong. Siabongakakulu eh, umpakato seme msumu abantu, pateka minandi kaba, yasi, ba sines kati, angzange ya mukenge ngamto lisa ngatai, sexualist kati. So, ngitala ge siba mbenga njalo song, msumbe? Eh. Na, ngubaba wofaki ibugo la wapaya, yes eh, ektrinen ngale, yes, yes eh, imboroto, oh, na ugsesukepe, yes eh, ngale. Oh, konumsumbo ngala. Oh, yes, na, ngubaba. Bangapmanje. Ngitala wesfazane, yes, yes, na, ngumaya. Ngitala ngeno kala.
Ngabingalela.
Si, si, si katelengele, ewat, udes ngabe watina yoto.
Ikamalamu andire ngaramfo bisbong, ka, ka wat nine. Sitelu kta kisalega la, ngesate las police station, egati saten jiswayo na kawat nine, ka above embassy hall. Iwati eti iwati, eno obkebengu kakulu, ekbu na kakulu. Konyango zulu mslonishwa ufikiile tuwa uzo ivula, sate las police station, u, u, umnumza npegitale, ayizange zivulwe, galu roso efikiile. And in dalalente sate la police station, waksako mslonisho petu thle. Ayiko agazek bona ale luto, omuni o MNC, wati seklu kiswe yon kiinto, agazek kale luto. If siku luma lento nomnyango SPS, siyatholu kuti, SPS utulinde upaplikweki, u kuti yosa inu, no gubaku nyazengesaki weskon. Paplikweki siyao inviter luto, sese siyatholu kuti ngati ayiko no into le, kubon. Siyakela ngitakisalega, kuyabula wana lakli ndao kakulu, ifini no no no, no ngchocha kwe mfulyo kukulu ngale kakulu. Siyakela mslonishapinde futi aslu kusalele ya inti, ting sate la police station, gabong.
Ay, uzu. Ay.
Ngchadi, please speak.
Eh, angchadi chuba, mbongalele, ngubingalele kulu. Tagake na, ngalo mssus. Ben, ngisakela lukbozo, ngonish, kwe zo kupe bababundusi. Siyathogo zutnamtange, siso beka logo ne kalozetu, etlo beni nobkebengu. Ben, ngisakela lukbozuti, bu nga kanaan mslobo palati wako, na makosi, uguze, kubezwe mbiizu, siwazu te sabelwe, si kanyisalege, u kuti silwa kanya ngobka bengu, on our own, goba, anange zoe nyom, abantu base South Africa, ba above fifty six million. Sogoto mkaka wako, ngacha opakelegile ngogwané. Oguesmili, ngitelu kbozutu kuna kanaan ama tuba u kuti, kupuyelen othelo nama reserve, at least akwakeluwe, u half way fully flesh members, abe abantu aba existayo, incha igwazukulegelela kui crime, ben, abeda oma reserve, sekwa ne intake, kui we wanapushela wi permanent stage. Goba i crime, anyinges tupa, emachaven kusejenzisa umes, kula umun, gotu mesela, ausa chatwa nyangesirias, dangerous weapon. Nishwa ipen lelukpaala, is a dangerous weapon. Gotwa, umun tumachula galeno mes, I think, falek amen, we manje. What are you doing with this knife, urozinza ipingom, umdu athole second, hash senden. Ogonyo gunkatazayo, ama police station sestela maplazin, la obandulun. Asena, ama police station, are right in the rural area, where people can walk to the police station and report the crime. Ogokina, asena, yo timeframe, siete jiswa ngenge ngane yetolopen, kutu anzo patela machips, i cleaning abuyanga namachips, we need a timeframe, mybe, ujwaka denila i kalozetu, when are you going to bring the reply back? Eh constructive, eh eh, eh tange more, eh ngagenje siku lule yon. Eh, ngitela, wapke. Sen go tela pance, ngyadala wapukala kuti ama promotion, ala konse itungoba bone i kulu, from, from the rank of full cannon, abana mar, abana ani, ababa subsidize. Ege gumela pomaje, ege kpegaleleleleze es lapans, es tonza kanzi, es viatari na zukashwa tim, kashwa zona, be sebe kati pachet, bang negaze mopachet, uguzu kasha bantu, uwa zwa, awuna ama poisa, bang alzali ngabebe chati malebe chala yere ndes, siabong.
Madandona, madandona, madandona. Awabango sasri sho madandona, no kutu suga, ngiamasme na kotakupe ngalenge tu zisho.
Ngitelu kri sho, mmsalwa seme msumbe, what eighteen, kapanswe kusu ultu. Eh, elokina, wapke.
Yosutu banke madandona.
Ultu, msmusis ultu, elokina, wapke. Amakosi they are getting paid, they must catch up and they must stand up and assist in fighting crime. Una forty percent of holy mile.
Siabong. Nga de layo eh. Uban ultu, ultu, lona sasasa ngara. Ngelagenseso agit.
Eh, angbongesla eh, ikama ngusmusi so ngwakambe salapaya eh, ewat five, msumbe. Eh, ngibingalele, wongamalu ngi parliament, besen ngitige general salute. Eh, into nje engfisuku i beka slan, one, i police station eh, yasemetho mnyama, i operator kusuka kakupuza, uze yo pele eh, le ekolasipinde yoshona nakakuabe, ugo kuti operator ndaweni ku, but ektrinen eh, izonigeza ma veni, mshampi ma bile fantasibenzengoso. Eh, gotwa, uti apega, i area, i kavayo liya, liya, liya police station, ya meso, yasemetho mnyama, imkuluka kul, so, ugo kuti sifisuku ti eh, kubeni upgrade liya police station. Eh, uma gungengejale, mshampi ngenge ngayezimezithese, kubo kuti around eh, kule area eh, imetho mnyama eh operator uzu, kubekonage eh, no ma imobile police station kwe zini ndao, because destructive sida lubi, kuli ndao, imfulyo ya bantu bagitu, imfulyuitu i apela. Eh, obukwebengu, bunga phezu, lubululele eh, abafu ethula aba, asabe bizwa ngeka miltheze eh, enopin. Eh, bayanda, and abala uligi ngale nde liu kuti eh, ama poisa eh, ayashota, eighteen awazutu kuti asenzalian, ya bona ben hasen ngikchen, kuso wenzeki ngoska kupuza, mshampi yemo, liyoti tingi processende, ama veni utu ngosu, be se wenzeki ngoska kuabe, iputumayo, la eh, ifeni midela, wenzeki ngosin eh, oshabi, la ma veni ma bilmanje, asen, asa, agu process uka kafe, lezhas ngosin, no ma, lu yoa ekfaneke bakatwana sushka, so ngaliyo ndela, siyakela kutige eh, imetho mnyama intu akoni pegale. Kupinde kuba intu ekona yenama nje, la wapaya, i police station yasemetho mnyama, liya, kuny rotation, ye management, eh, nzu kuti, kunga, ilukusa ni police station, ingafangshini ngel ndela, because, namslange, na ngugu yenu pete station, ksasa, na ngi opete, se wiliwaya eh, opete station. Ngali sushka, mshapakna ma case izamani ngiktinguti eh, apegalale, gotwa ngenge ngaye rotation, ye management ekona, eh, nzu kuti, ilukusa eh, imetho mnyama police station, ingafangshini ngel ndela kui yonayona eh, eti ngalala onese zingin. Besen kina kbase ngatita ama poisa mssibenzawa wuko, because ayashota. Kunendela u kuti, kunu kuti mshampi, so. Ningasen geza la ma veni, ni upgrade ti police station, nipinde ngaxa ama poisa ngaphezu. Eh, besen ngelakela eh, usabsu kuti eh, usabsi, awi recognize partnership palati wavo eh, ni CPF. Goba koni ngi inga, ekona, kukona, ungala recognizean ngel ndela, ngazutu mshampi ma wu CPF, angazno mshampi wenzela, ah, usabsi ifeva, ya, CPF yumlomo, ililhwa mpagatin, isebenzana ama poisa, so i partnership, siyakela kuti, usabsi, uy, 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 recognize CPF, thank.
Eh, sekumbule je, u two minutes. Siyukumbule, mbela, goba base baninga basafe so kolon.
Sanmonan, ikamalamu ngusamegilwa gashtole ewat fourteen. Sanmonan, ikamalamu ngusamegilwa gashtole, msumbe. Emzumbe Iwad fourteen Ogwa ami utshekwa kafe kagota aigal Kizotkela lapaya Ngenga panswe police station umsinzin Sizotkela ukuti lapaya Pa pinde basibusalelele ya satellite is a picture Kwakusizu kubakona wae kakulu Manje since inke eku Ezinyizindono ma uybonin tutsia bonale Kufonele ngaben kiazamo uy report Gotwa utwaza mufonel station Obonut utswazi inetswa kinenging Akfonele Gotu bonut ukoba ikone nyinda injelese tuzi Ngabe se awazu uy report alent Gesinyi katsukubon ekay se tuzi kakulu gomkuak Gesinkasukuyboni moto iliyula Nomubona bantu behambane inkomepsu Agriportegi Kugote inetswa ki Ukoba ngfonela ummund oni oni netwe ketize Kuzi kugeyanzekutzi Inetswa iti ngay Gotu bekon leyo tuzi sebenzai Ngaben kia wazu ukuti liyentiktenilo unsegile Besa ukuti ogusbili sizotkela la ukuti amamembers CPF Atole nomis skypaint nje Mukulu umsabenzwenzwa ela baba antu gotwa Knyenbasbona beyinde engenzi luto ngoba in Aiko intabaitola
Salbona, good morning Hello everybody All protocols observed My name is Ibrahim Sheikh I'm the CPF chairman of Hiba Dean I'm a new chairman, six months My entire report is over seven pages long So I'm not going to submit a seven-page document here Obviously, we have to hear the other people, which is important But I'm gonna highlight a few issues from the report I would like at the beginning to request that the report be tabled Via email for parliament's consideration at a later stage I would also like to include The district report that represents Sixteen police stations from Ugo So let me get to the highlights of my report In Hiba Dean, Amzumbi, we have a unique problem Where ward thirteen is being governed by two police stations This is proving to be a difficulty
Sorry Baba, sorry, which ward are you from?
Ward thirteen
Emzumbe
Renkonieni No, but I'm explaining the problem to you with Amzumbi There is an overlapping of police stations with regards to the jurisdiction
Yeah, but actually we are in Emzumbe now But what I'm going to do, I'll let you continue And then I'll add one more from Emzumbe
That's fine
Because you are from Renkonieni
That's yes sir
Yes
That's fine, apologies for the
Yasenipare yabutu abusutala pans
Apologies for the
Poti reporta kujubuti ndeje Uzovso is submit tamasumbe kajabapuza mananbezoi is submit
Ya ngzokubenga ngelndela, gia bonka
Yes
Ikinga lapana Hiba Dean kakulu i capable theft Na ma watamita Inkulu inkulu ikinga lapana is scrap yard itengama kopala pana Ilenginga siyazamo infilseta lento Ngama para simona La ma kopala ivela ivela lapangamzumbi Itoncho langa Hiba Dean ivela lapanamzumbi Lento fanele sitlangane ama emsinsini No Hiba Dean ngonke lendao sitlangane lendaba Ekkolokolo nje Otkolokolo nje ikinga kakulu I stock theft I stock theft lapana i community safety nilazon ienza i program Okfundi sabantu ukuti Basowenzakanjani indaba ya stock theft Gotwa fanele community safety ibu ifut Ienza le education I police station, the satellite police station siyaktele lapana Got kolokolo Gobo igote ukoko uksuga lapana kolokolo Yala pana Hiba Dean uksayama document Kanjalo kanjalo ukuti kakulu
Baba So sorry Baba You see the problem la You are speaking for all the wards That what you are asking for now, that satellite has been asked already By ward nine For kolokolo
Right, that's fine
So please just stick to your to your ward And then hand over your report because it's 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 too long, please
I've got three more points, program director
Yes, but they must not relate to other municipalities because there are people from those municipalities
But program director, the the jurisdiction of Hiba Dean Police Station Covers over four or five wards And some wards are in Amzumbi and some wards are in Renkonieni This is unfortunately the situation
Sorry Baba, sorry Baba You see why you are explaining
Yeah
Skatsiya habangonushale point in the Lord's Royal Cell Then you hand over your report, please
That's fine, but I need to table the problem as well The other problem at department yame is school children there Ba pata i amapushya eskola Aba pata ingwa tinga manje lento fanele si atresa The other problem that we have in our area Is end of the month ukoko mesetoli ila ipenjinyake Afikama para lapana Ba 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 they are They are threatening ukoko that if ukoko doesn't Round up five thousand ran from the other ukokos Then the paras are coming And one one issue happened in kolokolo already Where the one koka was killed And this is a serious problem, this koka was killed To send a message to the other kokos That next month when the paras are coming The kokos must have the money ready So the vulnerable children, the children And the old people in my area Is what I'm concerned about, especially in the rural areas The last issue
Siabonka Baba, last one now
Last, the last issue I support the move for payment of CPF members I think it's a move in the right direction My report will be tabled via email, thank you very much
Siabonka kulu
Angbingelele Angbingelele Okulumayo Umama unoxula kumalo From Emzumbe Wa ward seventeen Kapansukwe kantela Kababuchi gamtsetswa La i konseneami ise babuka kugazi babutale Po chefstini Sinenkinga opkebenku Since gushinjwa i renki, i renki
Ay, maselke tines ngaxaya manje somngamula mesha izan
E po chefstini si shinjwalue i renki Nganga panti reknoti swasu impalati Sesbona ma texi opkebenku bu Jangenge ngelndela mangalisaayo Uk Wa napo e i renki From e tolopeni mu ya epas renki kukute kakulu ngale zanti ama para Ayazenzela nje, atolukisimu si jengale zan Sen ngishutu babutale siyaktelukutu Engasi ngabi kondenza galau ngale I renki ya se po chefstini Skatasegile kakulu Besa ngiya la eh ku ma CPF Njoba sen ngishu ukuti ngaye ward seventeen, eh ward seventeen Goba koni Umlanganua ukona na mapoyisa ase Hiba Dean Aketa iznlaga na mapoyisa Esuzo sebenzisa na nompalati na mapoyisa Kbekonukuma napalati na mapoyisa nampalati So semesas ketiwele inlaga Kwatenjiswa oguti zizo isawu training Ukuzeswazuksebenza kathumsebenzengelndele fanele Kuzo kuymanje Agazesitone i training Besa ngibuyela lapaa ku baba o pateleneneze mkuak Isolo kubekona iskalazo Esvela go mama bagas bambele Ukuti oh mama bagas bambele ngomunye wabonsebenza khas bambele Sinenkinga khas bambele omamasabenzakay bambele Aswazutoli bonele los kakulumen Ikinga istanga nanayo ukuti snopezal number Lopezal number iwona los valela izindoza kakulumen Kuzo ukuti nomaga besa unga sasebenzi so ungenempeshenini Ma uti opalisimpesheni nomasau kukera nganganano ma rabia kula Fanele upinde ma office khas bambele po chefstini Ogyo kwenza ingwa kes thiles verifya ukuti When angaza opilongi kholumen angaz kanjan Ndjongo ba kota une opesal number Lopezali esunawo Uskolela only seven hundred and thirty-six rand So angaz ukuti umtambega bangas tasi sella basbalan tisi la puti Kwenze kanga jan ukutu snopezal Gotu holly male nganega ngaga is valela yonke izindoza kholumen
Siabonka ma Siabonka kakulu ma
Siabonka, ogokina jutre five hundred and fifty rand asu tholi Ngengaya lopezale suhola, siabonka
Siabonka, gitela Si zamennukutmaskulu ma zinsebenzesele tuwa Eh intone stindala kakulu Eh 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 opkebenku kakulu kaza Goba ituba le njobu unggongo shee la nje Nompati swanga le utomoga Itubele shee kakulu ukuti skulu mena omakoni tiskalesna zutitan opkebenku noksenzakamapoyisa njalonja Siabonka ma
Malboni ikama linkos Taeluk bingelela umparati wasirey konieni ngbingelele nabahambi savetse baspara shee na umshlanje Ikama ngutolisi lewa razondega Emzumbe municipality ward twenty ebu winu Abanye kwamanyama oh maspara kwamanyama watussebeke bakushos Nkinga inkulu la para kulu kazi ngesatellite itesbegale ona amapoyis Astola galukutisiza gallegiona Ngengayoku ti sa gitisitis me sitisiafiga tiwe namshlanja sebenzigvaliu Lento ngitaza ngoba namingi umunye wabantabakebenza galu lislaga lukali nwalinyanga umshaga triwaga novem Mesfiga lapaya bengpumile amaposti Mesfiga konakutwa namshlanje gvaliu aksechens Stalukwazutkwenza galakanjanilukuti ngafikas ngafike kutatwe amapoyisa ale tui impalatin gotwa benis katsitwa abase benzingas Si pinde strela futi ukuti amapoyisa sebenzisa ni CPF Ukoniwa i CPF parti Inlela kwenze kanga ngazupinde ngilani sengiskamekesenzeke izolo epsuku Izolo bilenestolo konala pinda weni saklegezela Mebetaza umparati uti intoyenzeke during load shedding between nine to eleven Mapoyisa angnalulu azakiti ngabitini parti wona afige after Luka zutkwenza galan lapasi zagaleso umparati Ngoba is satellite yinye ama wati maninge asebenzisa indawo eyo Tamisasfiga gionasinal tholu si Ngabe kwenze kanga lakanjanlok Ndjongo ba ngishutu iskameko sa izolo senzeke between load shedding Esfor i safety lapabe strela amalights indawin Paper sumparati ngaba mahaimasta mahaimasta na ma relay Ngekuzekala kaze kuti tlapakzotiwa ukesa wuko amalights ngaza kanyepikoza zobezibenzisa ma relay sumparati siyaztrela Sbon
Siabonka kakulu ma Eh gitela nje ukutolis nje informationen na ebenga itolaanga Dante itinda abandawa kulu abane lunga lolo klawlis amanje Ngabansima nasnanis ba Eh gitela ukutisana ukutikona Uhosi TM Setolo If ngisho kachle Ostalo National House of Traditional and Coysan Leaders Eh Nabezit Kubekoni inkosi RS shinga ostalo kozulnatal provincial house Eh Okay, okay Eh agiti pela onangfrui bonaga Eh kubekona inkosi Bimolefe Oi member of National House of Traditional and Coysan Leaders And kozulu Natal provincial house of traditional leaders Oh kodu deputy minister of police ukuti honor ru kasel matale, matole ni mama tale Gia kolisaka kulu ukutwenga mbizanga Eh yawa ngengaxu makoli ngba shile gotwa begumbi kakulu kukshia makos Asamatata mezo umshlangale ngkwebanga inye ngakukis ba ya napo Siabonka Eh stela ukuyage emton Eo Deputy Minister onentanga ominisuya kluela la deputy minister Oguti gikzibaga yane Siitela umtoni Nahangu sisla Ah gekone ngasenwa uy tv Ay mo Okay, sesukumile Emu valapa ya Yes, swan mbela Eh Nahangu sis Yes How many now? Four Eh Yes Okay, okay Okay, itelanize Ima iman twenlibu five About lapaya About three lapaya Four, five, yes Itelunga nge tatewit Genar tatewit
Sanbonan Ikama lami obongegele omakoposi ka ward seventeen Iskalazo sami Mpati washelo Sila paya ekaleni ekteni Shambé Njenge parlament Nabantu ngoba pela iparlament manzule lifigiile lisulelize gband Guballegile ukuti parlament mangabe lifiga Libanige abantu itsuba lukuti bakulu Ungabe ukuti ektrinengosu ku iparlament liti belize gband Gotwa tafuti parlament lamba ngapete luto ngoba bantabaniwa Lokonxusho yin ngishusho ukuti Mangabe guzotwa akutatwa ummund ase ward seventeen njonga wa ase ward seventeen Ward seventeen imkulu Ngingakulu ma mi na ngo wa mgesaiti la mngase saiti la ward seventeen ipat Onyo se ward seventeen Utzolukuti kona nindafunugi Number two Eh Ezinyisatalo sam Iparlament Esoguti Ndjongo ba kukuluni ngama tuba umsabenz Ukulumeni yawa kipa Gotwa indabine age Swa eighteen to thirty-five Lo eighteen to thirty-five utolukuti Abandwa base makaaya Fanele ba pata makaaya Axolo eighteen to thirty-five abandwa ba moden Lo eighteen to thirty-five mangabe utoli mali nomutola lo umsabenz Bai yele indawen zabo zoktabun Which means a makaaya apetwa eighteen Esesbata la esangapetwa thirty-five So kuleyondao siyaktelukutzi lungis Ngoba iyafana nale ukuti tiwa kufuno umetshik ummundoyo shanen Inzalastri twa ngayo ne umetshik uzogenza ummundoyo shanen Stalilungisone ontole
Ah ubantu makitmbengteli ile gotwa Ukutoma ngabe kitasa kamenandi kanjan gotwa stay mesetiti
Stalalezo zintoma ngaben shlangene Nishlangane ngembe la kubukuti manje njobas kuluma Akzwagali besa genzi wangabukutu kia zwagala njobe saksongizani Ngizela pa kabutshomoga Siabonka umkakosutolile umkakoa wa figa wana uy kaveli Shambengelinila anguzo figa wana sesutolile shee umtobi sinbutoroti Siabonka Shambengelinila angasizowazukthola na ma hans Kwazi kuhambingan zaskole Umkakopakati wabantu inkane Sekamba na ma tex manje Eh, umkako obukega unati uzoba piziga kul. Sia bonka glio indao. Ukti guno umkako osukona o itiela opuma eka menila bapushomuga. Eh, besa kuti konan omunyo umkako futi miningiye imkako. Ifa. Shambhe wago o two thousand iswagele ukuwali. Iyapuma lia na wenzeka yonki into. Sia stalu kutige manje. Kubeku kuti mangabe silungiselu umkako. Sita la onge na ni kube ukonkolo. Ngoba inkwali. Sia italelasina fagela ma ifagi wefuti iyapuma. Stalunge na ngube ukonkolo no ma kube itiye na. Mi nanjeh. Gitiba butshomuga uyokipimale nkulumzuwa niwa mukumuzuwa gitigoba kunepriti elafa wango ye two thousand. La lichagele kaya kanje. Mangabe li na izolu amanzakama ngawa emawindin. Umamkanza la uyagwazlo ushampuma umamumeya shampunga wazlo. Angasomi ipa ibili afawa yini makonana nomuz. Na lapofuti yini ilamatende atatwa ayo.
Sia bonka. Sia bonka tatewit.
Abapati makweda bangaza zizi. Yonale endakate ngisho witi siafana.
Sia bonka tatewit.
Ngoba kfanela sijulise ekalazo zed. Kotektena niteso tisipuma iparlamente puma gbandu. Iparlamente puma gbandu. Uzo hambo pete yini. Yomjalukchi nu presidenti lapayan.
Sia bonka kulu tatewit sia bonka. Olande layo.
Sanbonani. Ikama angusa konagwa kweela ngisuka emalangi ni kawat nine anda upila tabets kantala lam. Eh, bingelele njino poli bamaka esia bingelele se chavulu kubon. Eh, nginestrela lo nginumbuso bamaka eh. Sila pema langeni ngabuyas ngale sasteches lapetu song senta. Ukti sibensaranjani. Ngoba mine ngilitilele sexaveli aga safety and security. Oh, masine ngenga lapasfigisdeches valiwu. Ngahamba nganzi follow up ulapaba mkaegwatiwa. Kushota amapoyisa. Lapaa usizo fane lufo ne maufiga kuvalgiyavalo aglesastech. Aweka mapoyisa aglesastech. Fane lufo. Sitageile endawena semalanke lisinjontje luinfuyo. Lapaa eh etu song senta kunendawo ya yeyeyi inkane eschimayo eh i ground. Une sakiwala pesezvandela izegile ngale kengele kala ngopi. Ngoba yini aweka mapoyisa godinda weyotiyate lotwa. And asinaposi bamaka ni valiwiposa malangi. Lakareswa eh mapoyisa eh geeko. Amapoyi ikwakareswa. Kwanjontwa yonki into ziyashupera bamaka isalwase malangi. Skapokale kutaze mzinto zebantwinkuns. Opkebe ngubeningi manje mzinto. Isinga lobkebe besstela bamaka kuhugwenzi follow up. And ingyas uweno afulale sastech. Ziyasi sia kbona. Kote aksende kinalenkeela. Owahu sengbisenga ayo. Aksende bamaka isozokela. Ziyakela ulandelela pema langeni. Zipelila. Abasibensibaba nje aksende ma msebenzin na nteampama. Slesistola makesis njenga sibenzelumparat. Besstela bamaka sia tela stalawenzi follow up. Akungninga xorusho ahambela aglesastechisama poyisa. Aga uusho ubone uboninjela wenzeka ngai. Umanga bekshote stalu akasha amapoyisa bamaka. Please sia tela bab.
Sia bonka kulu.
Eh, bingelele mso nishwa. Eh. Eh, ngbingelela basho nishwa pambele. Bingelele ubkosi. Eh, ngbingelele nusalubabaktilizo namshlanje. No mama yawe twa sibtoni ngoketegile. Uptola nawaga nti nikama ngishali wat fourteen emandawe. Eh, babu makaaye sine challengeila papa emandawe. Eh, eyo kala njeh sine skoli ekti wiku kulesizwe hae. Lesia skoli lesaya eh segwi autopilot lesia skoli lis. Uprinsipalu akona. Wa hamba ngatisekpele minyake ufo manje. Uprinsipalu ngekonje umuntu oselamuli oselamulayo manje ekta ngono. Eh, ubabu mapummulo shala konemandawe. Sine challengeo ukti abafundila papa patime se bapati ipamu. Bati aisela uchoala. Benza yonki into njela paga saskoli lis. And ndesa bisaya uka kulis ebesi tela no mesinuise. Eh, koza mapoyisa seskotpe esepi wiazamo ngenelela. Amonito uktle inkane zithatapi le ipamu lis. Desa trela ukti nigenzumi lakulu lap. Ni nigiatenshin njiskoli ekti wiku kulesizwe. Ni peyenu uktle inkane snayipamu. Estalana smparatini zithatapi babu ndosisngakchabelela loka kul. Oguesbili eh snenyinki ngafuti yopsela. Eh, ubsela buldangiile uti nmparatini and amatu bemsebenzi nawo. Ngatise wona imtellelo. Kote ubsela ubkulakulu. Konanje isela ektiwa uchi Jay Krugs estalana lo lapemandawe lene imoba. Le lia sela le yayane babu makaaye. La njonjumshaba lapemandawe. Abantu bagiti bampinjeni baswe la ngisho nenda ukti ya kele wimkaso ya puma wimkaso kote banbagiti. Baswe la indawo ukti va kele wimkaso. Isa sebe itolile. Indawi sheli ea inomoba isena omoba ikuli ishala se kuzinda samapar. Namshlanje bamaka ngzovula ikala kuwakuti. Angenpeyenu kutu chi Jay Krugs lumshaba nawo awutenga kabana. Me ukti yi kuitproofu uktu awutenga. Stelanisbu isalewa nasibashala basemanda we saki la banbagiti zin. Ngengele wu yonani. Oguesatuse ngvala. Ben sata trela ukti. Amatipadmenti njeh obefigile njeh xugela omshala forty uzektrineksas. Besstela ukti dipadmenti dipadmenti. Ischele ipleni ezobana yo ekteni inikabantabasha amatu bomsebenzi. At least no mama ba no forty regwelha. No baba ngoba sintulile makaanja strela ita ilo iipleni konan. Itipadmenti dipadmenti njeh. La wazulu nataliska mgele ukti mlampe itipadmenti zokipama tu ba fifty petipadmenti no mahandresi. Abantu bagiti njeh ukulonke bakashu basolu msebenzi sia bonka.
Sia bonka kulu olande layo.
Ngabonga. Sanbonani. Eh, ikamalamu unonkulego waga zungu. Ngishala emalangi ni. Ngaku wat seven ngapantu ko umtoni umaspala. Eh, ngitela unka kulumike ngo se kuluniwe. Maylanano wewe wagenfuyo ngoba buwewe wagenfuyo kukona yonki indawo. Xugela go. Bemtwalume. Malanga yonki indawo infuyi yanchoncho. Ngengsa kushoge lok. Ogokala ngenga kusho. Ngitalukboza kwe na babu treli. Ukti tatiskatis ngaga nani. Ukti amapoyisa afige iskamekweni lagwenzeke konan intagelele. Ngoba unka figi kwama poyisa mdeskati. Kwanza ukti tinabantu. Sizesita tele umteto sisayumuntu osha isayumuntu entelene. Ngenga ukti amapoyisa agagafi. No ma sekzokina kui mina emnigaza amapoyisa isstatement. Ngoba wona agagafi esogwenzi msebenzwa. Ngia kala kubuzu kuti iskati. So kuti amapeisa abesiskamekweni iskatis ngaga nan uze stalisas ukti. Wapelu thirty minutes amapoyisa ngafegele sesngaita tele umteto. Ogokala lok. Oguesbili. Ezinja sha. Kunendawo la ngishala konama langeni. Una matrak atunwayo. Atunwa kufrewe ngatase matatwa. Amatrake edunwa. Lamatrak atatwa muzongena gu ar one o two gu bezli load. Lawa matrak. Eh, sitikambe. Ilonpis. Salkambango ukti ilonpis. Atataloa matrak uka freeway azofakwa emroshwe nilapo. Ba fige abantu. Masabeta pila masa kufiga wana mapoyisa again. Sesapi legati na. Nawama poyisa se yatapa afage mojwenzau.
Ay, ngikese zanda. Ay, ngikese zanda. Kubera manzini.
Zokubera malum. Masayatapa nawama poyisa. Masetapi laketa nawe. Masaba ndesangula geaba sangu. Ngapati gangasengiye ngoba xue kukute na angihambi indawenjani. Masayastangula koto nawe esetati. Oguesat. Ngitalunga sanke na kwe polistation lea eboli lea sekilpin. Ngobi bolide na yoyaze ya kregeswa. Ngenga ukti amapoyisa sugenge kogion. Kunayitolo lapaya zama zalabantu engatanu babisa ngamaka mayabo. Again gitabantu. Ngagiti sikon kutai sipili sgle sastol. Koto ngoba mapoyisa agawenzi msebenzwa ahambengena. Eh, pegutu wenzalakanja. Ngaboten ufikengane zin no abala pala. Kutai sipili sgle andawo abantu bofiga. Lay dolotina smakashi sela zone. Ogokina. Ngitalukuti ene. Baba o pegitene. Kauvula ama amatu bemsebenzi. Sine inkane natisa standu ngoba mapoyisa kota swazanga. Sine inkane ey koni makaaya ey fundile. Se fundisile njoba ngila ngifundisile waimene. Se fundilingane azwaya azitoli msebenzi. Omoya church office ufika kanyi ituja azoba be shles lapaya. Oh mama abasagwaz nyagaza.
Aybo. Asimnegeli tuba kulu ma. Sao peta njemanzini.
Ye ba omoya church office abantu batala basese. Kanti koni inkane. Esakula zine zine popu ukti ngelinila. Ngifisukwa ipoyisa. Leso inkane ziyaku konamshlanje. Esinyo zazu posi uchoala. Ngenga ukti lo poyisa zufuna. Aboko. Kanti umuntu mesa mta lupa mani inestechenvele. Ungeni inkane zed.
Sia bonka. Sia bonka sia bonka sia bonka sia bonka. Manje sengzopera kukuti. Sengzopera kukuti moblo maspaloba ngumsindo besengo febe meyena olakoba sponi meya la. Zopera manje. Stalulala layo baba.
Eh, angbonge mpatu walelo. Ki bingelele eh xugela pezulu go. No mzaneyo trela kwe shles zofiakti na bantu kasan. Eh, ikama angu alpeti mza balazoltuli. Kamuka kawatuan umton. Koto wakela ngikulumela njeh. Community policing forum ya se tutu. Eh, makaaye. Iskalu ngyesinye. Sine polistation ya se tutu. Endana. Ekukiile. Wakbe we amape. Kokota ela. Sixty years akonwa namgazala ikoranjaba singholimpeshi njeh. Ina imbo bo ma wahamba ngomkuakwa kwasuboni poyisa ngapakati. Eh, office through imbo boza. Uke wafiga ke umshoni nishwa. Waga TSD ukosa wapega. Watati report waiso isulise. Nase ngletis trela ukti sia tela. Wakela istechesisha lapetutu. Ngowale sastechisenzu kuti. Uksebenzo kwama poyisa ktelele ngshimpakati. Sibensin ndawenku. Esuka emgelenwe tey gum. Ukupu uko zofiga ungeni paratu herikwa lakwa wat five wakon. Koto hi venutwala twa yinye kpeya egwazu hamba lenda ama ukulisitu. Esven. Sia tela ngutikwandi swe. Is staff ngoba is time ukfona listation. Amapoyisa woyaku. Kupilitu xla nyamparatini ektiwa ukfona listation twa hi veni isayenda wene tis. Lubambeli niku kule ngenge ndamba sizo figa soland. Nyulamba ek ngote na mapoyisa oza figa ndamba ama ngu five. Aglonisla yelini into egienzeke practically. Sia tela ngakwa kela istechesisha itutu. Sekukiileli sia sasa kela belu ngubuwalu lulu. Wakutma kwasazi ndemoveni. Mapuma mapoyisa ambayo peka bopeka bobandu. Se senta ndweni yeni ngimanje sitelipu station. Ezogwenza luksebenzo amapoyisa kuslo npege sibensana naati jenge jenge CPF. Ogoktinage. Eh, baghe bagusha banu kote mafunukusho ngendelutka. Lapaya sitala sitala njenge CPF kanya ngenyanga. Sifigekse ngoo eight so sambe ngoo two. Siba mbemshanga nstulama report very crucial reports. Sia ambimlo me pasili mshope nja. Ngoba agukoluto esinga litoli station. Ngoba astolina stipend. Sia stare stipend fulma dasmegu stipend esinga abina ma condition ukti. Ay eh, is CPF zobomuntu mushono eighteen years yak thirty-five. Ngoba tuti kobe skulumeli ndesenge si toli tineskonanjenga manje. Ngia bonka.
Sia bonka baba.
Ngia bingelela. Ikamalamu gusanelsi waga mzobe. From umaspala umtoni kawat eight. Eh, ogwame engizanaku. No mzanupe treli. Sine kinga tinabantu abaku bazegile. Sia tela ukti kubekona abantu abane understanding kikulgazi kubantu abatef ngapakati mapolistation. Ngoba gunama case amanin gespegana nao. Umuntu weyajwengula agakulum. We na poyisa umunderstanda kanja no umuntu onka kulum. Gunabantu ana esna makesisabu amaningi. Bayaraiswa abaguazu kuluma abaguazu yo report amakesisabu. Ngakosia trela ukti kubekolu umto zobane understanding. Sen kulumela uku lonkege. Uma ngabe ngintindaa umtoni disability. Oguesbili. Lapaya endawena semalanke snenyinki ngakulie crime nganze skoli ziyabandwa ziyesgolin. Puti itake ten kulifami sugubase esen inkane nlezzi ezin tombesabo mshlanja. Ngakosia trela ukti uma ngabe ngaba koninjela ngoba aweka mapoyisa ngalese katingane ukti njalu ma zeskolin ayazkap. Stalani skulumeleni ukulumen onge na nasfagele amapasazo tuti inkane azise skolin. Apinde futasatse azise makaaye. Sia bonka.
Sanbonani.
Ngitzotela njeh tatewit uka xutin ngisho ngobaseku woyana. Ngitela suti ukuslinga no two minutes stand limares katin.
Sanbonani ikamalamu gusamampa ngusuka kawat two kachoni. Engizo kuluma la ngomshoni shawamo babtreli. Eh, olisuba ubakshaza ngvonkelele ubkos obkona. No mama yawe tu umakatma jolit. Eh, engakuluma la engzogusuku ti. Endawena se kaya ngikula ngikulue si logusbili selwa ngenge sete ilo ku satelite ezobakona lapachon epolistation. Even namanje senkizenga kuoka iboyazamse zimnyama likant. Icrime lapakachon ilangi le sikonelo amapar. Inkomo zianchoncho namanje lo polistation uka kuluniwa ngayo kachon. Angasengi bonu lo ngizwa emlandu ngtwaa eyike mjeela. Ngisia tela banta babu mpati swa upeki uka bote. Ukti tani slunselele eto ngoba inganze tu zisengupeni kachon. Sina samba endawo ibange lite uyokamans. Obuya suswa indaba ukti inkane esiputugezo umuntu. Sia tela bantalo tu ukti ilungisake ngoba se kungningu ogwenza galay okoko bayage nguluwaga chon. Ngenga ukti asnai polistation esetu san sayfoneli tutu inga responding eskats. Maningi gamakala agatuve ngenje tutu ngoba umuntu agana imalo kibel. Ngia tela bantalo eh kulunza muta srezislunselelo eto eh eh agavel. Ngia bonka witu.
Sia bonka kulu. Eh, ngitela njeh ugu tolisutu ohwipo benga zanga ngoba bingelele. Manje senkumbula masan ngedin dunayambla pokamalaala ushifwipo ekese trelis legislature. Kamalaala. Eh, bonka. Eh. Sia bonka. Eh, renkonyen. Esamboisa. Ngitalukala tatewit. Ngia ya weno sumayape perimisha opa. Ngia tatewit emu valapa ya. Ah, ovropera banyusi nsho wena. Es, sizo ari tilabo. Eh, ngitalo sfazane njeh. Please pick a female there. A female. Eh, eh, wow five yalo. Eh, 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 five. Eh, eh, sizo ari ti. Eh, eh, that guy we didn't call that guy. Ngizogwenza kanje na ngakwa. Ngizogwenza kanje. Ngizogwenza kanje. Ngizotala umto sekaleni. One, two, three, four, five mesen ngavana. Ngoba kusonanje eska bakomanga. Ungeni. Wansko baba manje. Kusonanje eska bakomanga. Eh, eh, asnezin kanje. Yes, ngikombela nasisakombola na losisopambe ukti ngikombela. Just count from one to five there. Yes. And then I'll give that lady with a green dress because I remember. And then, I'll give that lady with a green dress because I remember. Fudikimkombi le lapayan. Ntadaba ngibashale pansi. Ntadastale pansi. Oyasi, renkonjen. Renkonjen. Ine umaspalo mkuulula maji. Oh, maspala boonge sebenza kateka kuline kala, jisakala uktolelenke nienzai. Okay, astale panso. Astale panso, eh eh, nalo siso pambe, plunki nesala sese, no veni kom. Astale pansi. Ntadastale panso. Asitale pansi. Ngitela astale pansi ye songe. Weabonje puti, we 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 loguz, we camouflage, angzangze ngikombi. Angzangze ngikombi. Ngencha kamilidoy kogil, angzangze ngikombi. Eh eh, angzang ngikombi, ntadastale pansi. Ne asinginchele, afewa guguusha. Afewa guguusha, usonpana je kache. Nomama bu ya sobonto rightige guguunye. Kotoa ngitela je, sen senjowa ngisho. Ntadastale pansi. Ngitela astale pansi. Weabona uputi, we 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 loguz, angzangze ngikombi, we puti, we chakele camouflage, angzang. Angzang ngikombi. Benge ngikoshwa we, ngobu kamilite kogil. Benge ngikoshwa. Ne as gukuti. Ne as gukuti lapaya. Sujesu bange zozomtoye to maji kpeela, iluwa uputi, iluwa yapeela, jesu bange zel. Ntadastale pansi puti. Ngitela astale pansi puti. Ntadastale pansi. Okay, 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 okay. Ntadaxale five lapo. Ntadaxale five. Ntadastale pansi lapo, ntadastale pansi. Ntadastale pansi. Ntadastale pansi. Okay.
Angbingelele.
Umagwenzegile wasala, gunende office ugi isho. Ntadangipale, upiso epepe ni, uise lapaye taflie. Umagwenzegile, gobwa ngayas kulume songe. Ntadupale sese.
Angbingelele. Ikama lami. Ikama lami ulebona.
Angiti, lalela, lalela. Imanangasis, lalela. Angiti. Ngares kulume songe, angiti as. Maji. Ngitela abanye, batali pansi. Ngitela abanye, batali pansi. Ntadukubera sese. Kubera sese.
Angbingelele, ikama lami ulebona, awagampisanisbongo.
Tatewe tu. Ntadukulume sese.
Angbingelele. Ikama lami ulebona, awagampisanisbongo. Kanti umaspala renkonjeni. Sugaga wat nine. Ngizo kala ngokbonga. Ngibonge eh babundosi. Imobile polistation esesitoli le wat nine. Essebenza lakul, esanda wito la glaze intu. Ngibonge puti nangogus kashela. Ama community, ama volunteer, ala community safety and alizing. Inde inganga nje. Ntadoy stipend. Ngobiya ba eh min eh pesan number. Ngobiya babu lala lakulaba guazu giyo applya eh ndaweni kfuna bya applya guzona. Nukuti bestela, lukuti nbatate, umakpeela i contractia. Ni bafaga i polistation, misamba baba imarizervist. Ogwe sbili bestela, benkela futu gukuti. Ama community safety, ama community safety alizing la afawe kolene. Bestela lukuti nuwakasha genmanje, ngoksemtetweni, gobwa ngiyabona galu gukuti umsebenzi, bayawens. Eh, ngibene scholars. En naso, en naso gukuti lapaga wat nine, sene kinga ngulu. Eh itaramizo. Zile, zile, inde lengayazi, nokija waitaramizo, uzenga alpezulu lakul. Benkela luksezo lap. Lapaya, ngipolistation se makit. Sinekinga lakulu. Eh ya gukutistola kunalenkampa nama security ktiwa uolf. Suhtola uolf uhamba pambe lakuluguna ma poisa. Uolf uhamba pambe ngayoguti uyatubule. Uyatubula futu ya bulala ama poisa azange move. Bestela nissezo gukuti gwenza gala nama kit, ngiyabong.
Siabong sese. Upambe lo two minutes, ntadusabu two minutes je.
Mangsa telle tu ban ki bingelele. Omipambi weni uanathoria wa lakulu enda wenyaga majala eh wat fourteen, kapantigwe renkonjen. Eh, mina ogwame benkisakela lapagumshonisha. Gukuti sikala upkashela ama CPF enda wenezuka majala asina ama CPF. Besse kupinda, mesekuanama CPF. Uguzawa zukutala ogwenzo umsebenzi, ngobwa ngeskate sebenza, anigena gen filozao. Eh bantu na ba iskeben. Babu zukthola ogu ngane pele uze, babu zukutalega, bawense umsebenzi. Besse ngisotela. La ugu buza, uva ba upeki, ngitela lukuti. Gwenza rangea, lukuti, mina mangitoli umum to oshonile. Ngimtolile ngizhambe, aimde wa no solilo bu, ngayana mecholo umum to shonile. Kotoa. Ingane ibon umum to eya emkakwen, ngeskatese kukule. Yupo sekaya. Ngata ga abchelo umakela nesamba se akona, umum to ulelupeke pezulu shonile. Ngata tukun ngwafulele ma poisen. Ama poisa abuza min, lukuti sijeno, umanukuti umum to shonile. Ma esefika futu spona ngo four, afia ngo half eight. Epsu, guiya netasimande simande siakotole. Ama poisa fe ngo half eight. Besse kuzoba ile megoya ama para, aimde wa no abandwa inkunzi eshepstin'i ama para. Para asbambi inkunzi, then besse buwezo skolo tela futu, ngoba aksebenza nama poisa akoba bubekutela. Babu ye ba zo sijeno gukuti, unreportilege utolene. Sine protecti ntsinala pangapagati. Ogukpe kfuna lisiguendengoba. Umangabe, sinsa telle umtetwe ezandenzetu. Kuchiganina futu njobo patina gui sinestu kunyezwa. Ogukpe kfuna sese, ento gobwa, ay, ngoba labasbasaba in staff. Pa, senga guazu kuzu bange umsato pe la staffa lina. Gobwa nimengele nietsu. Ngipinde ngizo, kunuwa ngidaba omjonjo wesmoto. Sen kulumeli kez enyonge. Babu pekutela sia limala, aimde wa no omjonjo limotezutu. Isatso ngo November, ya tatso ngo September, baklo nyag. Eh, nyisatso la stengo November. Eh, ngitoli polistationi, isatso pambi wekeiti eh polistation. Umfanawo ya kichima, omgena eh polistation. Usinagungatso leni motemnyango kshwa bambulai. Agesimodiya hampi, eh polistation ako wa upektel. Ngisatso limoto majje, ngiyarreporta bambulai. Poti moti tatso kez inlag. Babu pekutela asiko hepi ama poisa. Sitela ma gwenzega ukasha. Ogowandi sen gala okeshweni. Sitela ma poisa azo sebenza la umpagati ngoktembega, nangogo zitemba. Besse ngipinda ngiya esgolin. Esgolin apepangala lakulu zonke isgoli. Isdaramizo, i i isipamu imbesi. Benkitela babu pekutela wandi se itraining, guma security asesgolini. Then, ave sebanazo, izindo zo guzwigela, guazu kata ngesbagela. So i kebengas guazu, son dele mankebe azu, kutsumumtu una lula zo lpelela lale, ento ay sebenza ona yenzai. Sia tayelu kwigela gesgolin. Besse sotela ama poisa akande emparatini, ngoba angas gukuti. Ama polistation afunane machalti nase matolo pen, si besse ife emparatini. Sia tayela babu pekutela, njongwa silange, sese na entiso zetu, plungo ngoba. Sizo kuluma la, guzo kshulian, ngensangalo, ngesese stoli lutu nzo tula, nuzenwe, chambesengafa. Senga itola anga i vendu lozetu. Nenembuso, etinga penduke, la anga nje listanda anga. Sia tayela babu pekutela sia limala.
Siabong.
Sia tayela babu pekutela sia tayela, ugu ti usisi zengbe la, gule 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 ndava eh.
Siabong, Baba.
Yokto tola go bantavashonina, bantavalimele, lukuti spenyo, anjan tine. Gui minin sholid, shuta bantasbae, keba kukuzi emkakwen, masbasol.
Siabong akulu. Siabong akulu. Eh, ngiyabong bingelela, lamchala ngapambili. Upeki, kamalamu upeki, ngwakatu, mangtumengu payan. Ngisugalaba eh wat twenty-one, eh popoi. Eh, umakai wea wasla pe popoi. Sinekinga kela. Sinekinga yobkebenku. Obkona, sinabantu ba taisha ma drugs, makai. Eh, umum to taisha ma drugs, uabone, uwa unreportinda bayaki. Uabone futu ama poisa efika, even though efika ngaksazo, nomange li ni langa. Afika ma poisa. Kotoa few hours, hambile na uchiambona nangebuwe, we akubeka futu ya taish. Hours, nomusuke, eh wakuazelile, nomusuke zenjani. Goba ukebenku sibona kuana nagoa na ma poisa. Enda ma poisa makai, ayaluza ukfiha mangabe siriportile. Ayaluza ukfiha esmas reportile. Ebeyla pe mapek. Asa zukuti afalulani. Asa zukuti afalulani, gobwa mchampionism, eh ngasblegele lukuti, ivenu kamge ngokshesh. Ayge, angipatsiala pe shepstin'i rank. Niabona galu tukwatin, ukbe gonya olakundo slap. Sige satsasa initiative nabange, baba fuwetu gukuti. Sio 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 susinte ipara lapaya, ngelni langa, kattingelanga, kwa kola, oh mama bezu. Sa ayala paya, siyamba ngemoto sasusayonki nde ipara. Kotoa, ndepshungo, ngizogusho longo, ngoba angnaluval. Ndepshungo. Ivenu so itoli meseg, eti. Sia zukuti katwi yokipa ma para, utispele nganti. Eh ukshungo, ugu ti lavantu ba taisha seringa nsetu. Uwone la ma para pinda kageze mziniesu, nomema kaya eti. Umasesbiza ma poisa angaxeshukfi. Umase wita telle umtetu, se guboshwa wene, mina ngiviktimia lo ento makai, ngisbuwale chere. Ngali nte gukuti ama poisa ngafingiba mbelu umtetu. Endi ngenge, ngenge, ngoba, angazu glinda ma poisa fiha ngonya ozai. Enye ndepshungo makai nzo isho. La senekinga, lapre rank. Gunendawa, esindasau, ngeskatese covid, ngeskatese covid. Uge wakona into yokokwa ma para, changanisawo be wenda oni. Ashulua inu, uchulua inu, mangjulumen, uwa koka maji. Abizena, ngoba sia waspe, sasngixema gubu gukuti, usbanbanu kala gubu, usbanbanu kala gubu. Besse xoba, yoktina ge makai, ugu ti. Siti nindaba ya labazali, abathenga guma para. Gobi problemi kalala, fikipara zotais mzinuama. Besse ngiyathenga min. Umasele taisha, selingtaisha serili para. Sa sa ma sengkjonjelu emin. Ngiyatichima, mina ngitsampraga sa onyagi. Agai pege weni ndaba ya labantu, abathenga guma ona ma para. Goba skatela gukuti, abantu bafika bezo bezo taisha selo ama para, besse yathenga. Senkisinga fika, wa konfigurative ya mi ke mzinuama. Ulinjelu sinti inimi, goba fale nka keli stopa, nksati tivya. Siabong. Zeluwe vala lapo. Siabong akulu.
Angbingelele. Ki bingelele undosi, ngibingelele meya yami. Ikama lamgo nelsu endovela wa ga wat eleven, kanzi magwe. Eh, iskalo samla makai kakulgazi. Sige polistation. Sina i polistation protectu wa, kotoa ngendele sebenza ngakona ka, ay, asiko hepi. Eh, sasi ne mobile, polistation aike clinic. Sitense ibonivali we. Gobwa, ah, ah, station commander bayashinjo namtsange ubonaylo, kshas ubonaylo. Komchaka wanislindelindi yanjelzo balikon. Ezozala four three months ilha ambifuti na. Ki besse ngiyakela la ma makai. Kunye CPF, mchabawonka so. Ay, lapaba ntu baznigele, ngimpefumulo ya baba tholi luto. Kotoa ama poisa yakwazu babo panji afika night TV. Gomajje beslan nditivi ka ten thousand, new umum tu last week. Kotoa majje mina, mina jawangila. Ngiumdo osa o ismoswa, gobasa landitivi. Eka ten thousand, itaiso ngo three thousand. Si ma CPF sinagukthwalanzi, mangoba ama poisa, asan gene na wa ama para. Sitema skuluma ngenda bayama, yes, ntsangu, ma unga, basijalukutkona. Osmalkanjang, yoas musmalkanjang, azutinta ngu yinta ngu. I uunga, i uunga, kotoa ama poisa ufika kona, ni poisa liglo mozokta ise uunga. Lia puma li shi umum tu ya taish. Kanini esisela ama poisa, no mama poisa wee nama kaya, oh wahole lingente. Kunu gwenze gukutaka itoli male tetsoa eh taish isdaramizo. Eh fuguzisa, bantuslos mila sita bantu mokfi. Abane itaramizo, kanini itaramizo, stelik ma poisa.
Ulungela ge nse sizo ari. Angbingelele ba shonisha ngapambili. Ki bingeleka kulgazi, ngokatsele, katsegele meya yami. Oh, obaba omkati. Ikama lamgo tsemkosuwa isakwa wat tetuwa, renkonjen. Ngisuhwa endawena sese ngolweni. Ngikusukuluma kati seka makai, ngoba kshua ayazde endaweni kuluma kaya. Eh, lapa es ngolweni, sene polistation eyo tuwa. Eh kaba tesa area, eti aibe, iritias, ena pezulu, wama ka twenty-five kilometers. Ngokso balage ayaguazu kusabenza ngowanen. Ngalo kuge bestela snusakuhulumenwe tu. Oguti asakela, omgena ne amanyama polistations out tu. Tesa ngayegufane oma esamachatu, ngale eyo tuwa ekon. Ngokonda ge ba partipetu abanga pambili gukuti, izindo zenu, nguhulumeni satsaguti. Siawakonda, ama prosesakana kala gudulekona, ngapama, gu gu gu, wa kiwe ento nomi ipasiso. Besse tali ngitela, polistation eyo tuwa makai, agiazi itemi lo tiya kona. Ah, 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 agiazi itemi ya kona makai, nomangoto, we upgrade, isowe level, egoyo iye wenyi. Goba skonda, ugu ti oma sese isowe level egoyo. Izoguazu tikashia ama poisa amanenga nyana. Besse ka provega, lo kshua ibizipilisi ama poisa. Ngukuti besse wandana maven. Sen petaga batro nisho ngasstetis katin bambalolo, two minutes, kampatisel. Makai, kunu mbuto la iktiwa iskepe. Ngizwile la, insuwe safm bebebe four na abalale, betu umaka okoboloake, uyasa ziskepe. Aginado, rikilisi. Besse lukbuza ge makai, gokulu kuxoni ipa baba. Oguti iskepe lisi. Jawasi kona, twaseskona ivina se kul, sia sebenzi. Bati kisitela lakul, egwe buweni, egwe fuyo, nenenenen, na manya makana, nubunyukkebenku. Oguti ku kona, nuksebenzi sana, pakaswa so iskepe, nomiyango, akwa ma poisa. Nuliga se se iskepe, sese nakanja nama poisa, niabong.
Niabingelela. Angbingelelu MEC. Niabingelele. Ime kona. Bingelela ma cancela. Ongoko umum to gwe leadership, ngbingelele nama kos. Okuluma yo uslindi ilehengwa. Opuma ga wat fifteen, kapanswa renkonjeni. Ki peso cancelu sufundo ngon. Eh, babu pekutela, ogwame kondenge ngogwena, benkela lukutini ngalere. Eh, babu pekutela ogwame gumeela, nanestech some east out ports. East out ports. East out ports, he, babu pekutela monga ibiza majje ngoleven. Izokhamoga ngosiks, ngoba mangabwenzi follow up, egusbengu funa ngoleven, bakjel gukuti, ivenu yoduwa. Endi, i imama gutenja ben basashonele msumbe, basugeliskebenku. Ulo kufonu, fonu zube strafe, itrinifiki, lechambesekfika bangena ngau sik. Una banta bashonayo lapaya, msumbe. Una bantavashonayo la paya msumbe. Asa zutu si ma sebe shonilebe bulawa bantu ga ekpelelepi. Akbo shua umuntu, se senza ma toytoisa estechs sa katsala ama poisa kasa stunt. Babu upegitale nje kuno uks tumetumese nsege last week ngewikend. Andi ngifisa no wazu kuti ama travel, iskatsin soktrina kwa zukvalwa. Ngoba avula akshau five weeks sen ilaseklimala kona bantu. Ama poisa ngafiki, asisaveli fulo len ngale skaskota nawajula ngakion igemka kwen. Ngipinde ngibeni kinga yoku sama poisa kaleskatesa kana wa ma ven, ngoba se zastumu saswatelela ma ven ay ma swinkep. Ngoba manga be connectala lo umuntu otsinde ngonge mvumo. Batu nasebe mfa kange move kandusu kexukumezege ilefane banfaga ngala kulo photos about a lie. Oma nga besegio pegwa ntsangu no mu umtuz taiselijik, ayaya apuma, ayapuma galenzela. Koto ma kuti koni wunga, no misinza se wunga agai ngene, agai. Ngelingila ngasapot asu mpanasutu kuti baye baye, abayenza ngifollow up yoku kuti ngoba saktsola logo besikfuna sambob. Usakubeka in, nama nje ksa isinza se wunga nje eksende min tam bam, bazula la ngemka kwen. Ta iswi wunga bayaz, se skas, se sikesa xala pansu no kapshense ngi. U station commander ngoku fa kwa bantu, no ngjontjwa kwe imbuz na yonkitbasta zelage ne mi anga, oge ngosiyamba velebas nje. Oke imbuz akonuwa, oke rape akonuwa. Yonki ndagionia, e abo ngsolugu kuti ntsangu, nde la pe south port. Stela nande sama ven na ma poisa ngia tayla.
Siya bangakutawit.
Ang sa nduktelindonge itoyto i ngia tayla.
Siya bangakul. Ng- ng- gezotela nganjena ge, gezotela nganjena. Ngoba, ngi- ngi- nyoba ngila ngesu kuti, kona ba tikswala ngolesmili ye boona aba konjua. Ba twati nde so yenza, stela sben, inga ngi ngasolanga nte ngenza ipindi talikaos. Ngitek, ba ta tawo nde zwa faka one minute umtemu. Immunity, immunity, kona le- nse zwa epaka niebe la ba ngansa ibon manje. Iteba keteyo na laputi kulu, eh immunity, stela de immunity, stalin pansu. Usho uka uku nyupale pansu kusabite na kana paya eh 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 etafle. Ngana ge zorit.
No.
Soranga ngan, uma tot, iya nda eh 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 eh, vala lapu zorit, ngake, ngia naga la ge manje, kwenza kani ndebengisho. Abapinde mu kusislo eskipes, lo, abapinde mu va bang. Uktina glo, uktina glo oche oye lugu, ochesi pirates, uktina glo, eh uktina yen. Abayi bapa le pansu bayisela paya etafle. Ngina ti ngvuli tu ba talipansu kina gale foot. Ufa la bantonisha bangene, ba pendule nzo, kala foot ma sebenzopa ngokpendula bantonish. Uktina glo uku putilo, yoka tayla. Stela bayi bapa pa, ta ta ta, uktina la. Stela baba pa la bayi bayisela paya etafle, ngana ge zorit one minute.
No, umta ka akabingelele eh stalo. Eh o babu za guza lo eh uchepesino CPF eh poretuati. No eh ka babmakai, eh siyakala la pa i- i- istechs sa se poretuati, eh sibuyela pe balungu. Sibuyele bantu in. Ba tso, siyakala eh babmakai, eh kanzi magwe, stelyo silegelela la pa baba, sebe fika kula bantu. Eh ngiatu chulona kanzi magwe, agu mnandaanga na tina. Eh number three. Eh siyakala ka kulu eh makai, si CPF eh yonke, ngoba na kuoku kuti strictly siyala. Siya ngayi ngale nde ba makai yetu yokola, ngoba lestai painta ngihinswa kala. Kona siyakala sama CPF, eh sitole o- ogukola, ngoba le yoku volunteer. Se kusabana ngama lele novi, ika men novi angsalitanda siis kala. Ngayi ngayi yoku ti- ti na sama CPF asa kono kola. Kota sasabenza ngapezulu no ma eklegelele na ma poisa, ogokina. Lendo yete partnership na ma poisa, ai sebenzeli ti na. Ti na sasabenza ngendeleya julele, koto masekpokulutu ama poisa xanga besanana ta gwenzee. Kuma nje ngene report, lakzo bosha koni membersam ama poisa. Kota imemberzam bessebenzumisebenzi, alright, andi.
Ukunge zorite minute ti, ngoba besengi etanje, stela njalba mbela minute. Asesorela ma poisa uku nyukpaale, uksabite la paya, stela nganjalo ndo da ma tot.
O ngiege msho mshonish.
Yes, stela nganjalo uki wentei msteli minute, pa tse kusorela ma poisa ndakuwa begile manji. Siya bangakul, ma konoksela ukpa luku se la paya etafle.
I'm very short and I want to be heard, I want to be heard. Siya mbingelela ba partibetu, bashlonishwa betu. Eh ujuli akunlo, kamka kuwa twenty six rankonyeni eh footing represente. U gender based violence, uksugaku province uku zalangu, ukezera network or no violence against women. Ngikatazeke ka kulu ke, mpatiso wetu babu upegitale. Eh su mpanatuwa se kamalake, siya ma structures za se kamalake. Si proposal that this banning of the Kamalake Police Station. Uxtagazu akwistech, ngoba asissebenzi epsugu. That is not even. Kota logo kuinkinga eh exopa i crime genke longa kazu ibone istechs mese. Eh istechs sa se kamalake kune organized crime, babmakai. Ama poisa ah malele si morede nmpagati. Ogu smili the recycling ba ama drug lords. Whatever abaitate mpanatini bayaybuisela mpanatini, wona la ma poisa futi aona ama taverns. Asipepanga tina su mparati, mesbona ma poisa kuwona ama criminals. This is called state capture. Wezinga lpezu. Ogo sabakona sasiluela ukitisme kona, swaguama prefabs, sakiwistech, asikalonjwa na namchane. Ogu smili asinayu station commissionatina, sina ma bamba from two thousand and three kuzeke manji. That is an ineffective management control, ogokina. Abantu bokhamba, so kuibona ba ama citizens eh South Africa. Ngoba benzi crime base bakoke gobe right. Sikala ma pota, a- a- kukontrola ka ma pota etu, i chekwe ndo ya bantu bokhamba.
Siya bang. Siya bang, siya bang.
Eh ngikala uku me go okina, ayaincreza ama cases eh GPV eh kamalake. Ngayi ngoku ti ama toro ete, ayadaiswa, anne price. Medic cases monetoro tel ne price, GPV case melkona line ne price. Drug trafficking melkona banju umuntu wa confiscate in a price. We abosho umuntu three days upeki in the community, uchi ti injection of crimes.
Zelugwe nyupale pansu kwa mbesela petatme. Ngitela, ngitela sis tike tuu minute. Sizo banenkinga yoku ma sebe pendula, bato nisha baxa wiskati, banga wazu gun pendula, kandis ngenitani shi. Nda lasbanige li o chance, ngia lasis.
Ngitela ukbingelela, no ke la poisa yepesulu, kamalamu kuti ngiwa kamsimango, ngipuma kona kamalake. Minite ngitela uku babu makai, ukiti stela ama poisa asse kamalake ashinjwa every two years. Ngoba i- i- population yetu la payana iya ndamajka no kebengu futi banta kakul. Endo gune siitela, stela babu tayla ufi ke glasa stech. Ngoba eh imember CPF and Nepal Hood Watch, se stabangus snunevele si svaletina nje su mparati. Ngoba ngesu wazu gobi ama kala la payana siyafika bavalile balele bayasaba bona, ngoba sa ubkebengu. Endo gune siitela, siitela uku kuti gwenzee le campaign uku kuti kivala ma pitbullze ma logishin. Kuna ma pitbullza kichime kamalake, stela uku taka val, siya bang.
Siya bang, awa mnanandi sis, siya bangakul. Fushana je kmenandi.
Eh mbingelele na, lo kulumayo uchamsa nga kanyuso. Eh na ge siitela yotina si ekamalake eh wat twenty eight, batingzo kulumasa ma range whole cluster se kamalake. Eh siitela uku ti singezelewa ma poisa eh polistechsina se kamalake. Ogu smili eh siitela yoskela uku tilia polistechsina se kamalake, siitela ivulu officiali ngoba egakavula. I- isa pilonga ku public works. Ogunye siitela yoskela uku ti ma se ivuliwe unezelewa ama poisa ama volunteer. Ogunye siitela yon eh uku ti ama poisa akona manje. Awo si zo mparati, siitela uku taka rotate.
Sekhi wolo.
Nje ngoba. Nje ngoba o ma partibesstech be rotate, ana siyakala uku ti bashinjwa yoba iso voli polistechs. Ogunye siitela yosiklasta eh siitela i- i crime indaba, o kuin. So that is zoguazu klangana na ma commissiona, si toprenindo sala eh case attend. Ogunye siitela yon eh. Uku ti ma ku klaswa ama poisa, stela iye wela ndoga eighteen to thirty five, ay eh extend. Chambi krene kfuutu nao eh ngia zaba upegelu ya batwa ndabantavasho, kota stela nje krene kfuutu. Ngoba iaba valela bantava na thirty seven, uku busulese mushalo umuntu, thirty eight, ay ike extend wenge si loke siitela yofut. Ogunye siitela yon eh, ku bantabalita ama CPF, ngia zase ikuluniwe. Ngitela nje vedianzwe blanket ndestai paint, ogunye ksetwa yolo. Eh ogunye, oguspataga mbige babu ksetwa uku ti. Ma konu xelun fana nalul, ama poisa velabe maninga kulu. Kota masekfane swati ngawa bi kona, so siyakala uku tila ama poisa amaningila wan kata yon. Nige inuwa tumegle ndawe ngayi ka ama police, ama poisa, so iloko nje besitela.
Siya bangakul.
Si- si- siklasta ngia bang.
Siya bangakul. Awava nupambe no one minute, ngoba swala ngawo nse zorit, wa nubanbe.
Eh, angale mbingelele iskulu zonke ngapambili, okulumayo nganyis, wa kolo ngila eh wat twenty five. Eh nginamapuzu njaa uto asale ogningi sebenka vilekon. Eh ku yitelo ogwama ogningi, ogokala ngizotela indabaya se zkolini. Sine ishe zkolini nganzetu aspepele. Ufitre klinik, kuna ma security au tu, kota ku yaba taba fifty eh klinik. Ufitre skoles dabant esnes nganezu one point two, ufige kne security lotwa. Siyakala uku ti inago leanto ya ma security zkolini ku zenga nse zopep. Number two, sizo tela imtete pasisiwe, eh South Africa, siyakala nbueni ipegisi se iaslimaza su mparati. Eh ine weyoku ti ifuna izgebengu akulu kunati esuge skechengewe. Siyakala uku ti imtete nje ngaleyo ipinde itu kpegelala kula. Siyakala futi ne simosoksebenza kama poisa, uku ti simoniitwe akulu. Ngoba ama poisa ku sinisikata ya sebenza, kota kindezelewa imteto. Nange ngelama chaachi nza ngayi zinto, siyakala uku ti nawimo nitwe, koziaslimaza si imparati, ngia bangakula.
Siya bang. Na mama poisa nde tese ufo je koto wa shaere scart. Siya bangakula ge, sbonge kula nje, uku bambe sana, solalela ge manje, aba partiso betu bependula. Eh sotala u babu makai, uze u MEC, uzu MEC. Besi ime ma konoksasa yonme weti street, aga nemechamege, kona ngikswile yoktinda umewe lokal, we- we- osere, konye no kota azo- azo kava. Eh stela ngene ma kai eh. Anga ato ma kai besen toku kuti sotana shomoga in, owe akti ma kai. Sa- 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 safumela na ba partiso uki sotala u MEC ucho moga, beseku zu ma kai. Ma konoksela eke ime nzo nose zati ndi ime kula zimeyti street. Siya bang.
Siya bang. Thank you, siya bangakulu eh stalo. Pambiili de tuza pambiili. So ba is tuza nao ngelingila. Na siya kola, siya bang, no siya kona yes, no siso bangakula. Eh eh chair eh want to extend our greetings to both of you. Minister Undosis, siya bingelele, eh all mayas aba kona. Eh honorable members from NCOPI and members from legislature. Ama kos asedjunkulu akona hall of stalo ngosuchenga, onka kona sisuti sikuleka ma kosina asedjunkulu. Aba sebe zinomparati. Ko umsabenzimnani, eh umsabenzomnani ngokama kai. Eh beslalela siya fumela, no kuka umsabenzomnani owa kuma kai. Kotoa sizo, ngoba izo ndobesi kona la eh makai si tila kaku luka zinendo yemkuako oye infrastructure zehul. From the provincial government. Isa ogusho, ku kona i kulumes kulumego kuti, sakala kuti ku timenda education. Ngoba i police, timenda police, ay ngene kula kuma security akaswa ama department. I think owe tumsebezi from la eh sizo tata zonki zinde shiwa. Si hambe siya koka nosa wetu, oh mama, oh- oh Fraser, oh mpartiswa. Wa education uku tu ne kala zukuti, is safety engane ekoluini ayiko right. So bekonildele uku ti go increase the security ekoluin. So anezu wazu kuti gitiswa gwenzee ngani. Kotoa ngia fisutu iscommittee, andi nzo mkele uku ti ma sebe tati decision. Uzo wazu yo present, we put follow committee, a present for sure na we legislature. She will then later for sure eh make a statement eh we meet uh communicate and then no manama eh meeting nza galayo eh khalin. Eh. Ezu department of safety and licensing, wa waking close na ma poisa. Ngoba umsabenzwe etu uku ti si combat crime, si prevent the crime. This why ama structures afana ma CPF, ama structures sebenza nao. Wa aware uku ti jawani shi luku ta senseana kulu na ma poisa eh the station level. Eh CPF sense training, ikona into esekoka eh no minister undos. Siwe eh meeting eh ibizu eh undosi, ikunational, yoku tufenkebe konildele eh za ma province. Yoku identify ama fans, uzo wazu ku tonge nane ama CPF or structures lawa asisza uhulume. Uku ti ku prevent the crime, bawazu ku tba tewa ama stai pens. Janga manje suke process yoku ti si koka no timenda katrajaro, uye no petimali. Ozo wazu kuti asnegese imali, densi zowa zukuti si bawazu tba tewa la stai pens. Asune zukutrejaro eh indicate, ngimtandilu baba la pano beti eh eh minister. Imali ayanga anigese wakpe la ama ya ma department, amo eh ne jikotoa yenyayize ma- ma poisin. Ngao ti kabasha ibamte etu, oke ibona, am national assembly, eh ge yonan na ma pro- provincial eh legislature. Eh allocatea eh budget, iwa zilu kuti chati leyo, siyako yelu kuti malizowazu kuti. Iye eh nas- nasama poisin ordonakumti safety and- 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 and licensing. We've noted eh lakwa kona gunama spaces angakwalsiwa ama CPF, eh kaku luka zin. Eh oksho la pa oza wetu buye eh wat nine, mzuabantu eh no asewa ten, futanjalo kuti. Abekonu kuti si activate eh ama structures and ama program eh kulu kaza CPF. Nala baba choncha eh inkomo, konu tabasi kota kanundo, senengilkok uku ti. Eh ekatilsho uku etu, uku ti la ma structures lawa angaona ama- ama poisa nje. Tuwa yin gambe la bantaba aba- aba kata eh inkomo, aba kata bantaba chonchi inkomo. Uku iskepe yes, uku ti iskepe si right now, oma si right si rat nganjani. Ngoba eh yinto eh si kota yosiveza na si iskepe, andi siyafisuku shu kuti, siyasi zawe zingin nao. Kotoa eh yinto si identify be- be- basic koka yoku ti. Ukoni ndaola, utolo kutabanta ba uiskepe, bafiga uiskepe benga nazin kom. Kotoa manje sebeni sebeni nazin kom, uku ti tramga api osu lela ngelo nyusuglen. Kotoa futi eh yinto si kota yepisaido ni iskepe, uka ma poisa lawa rest of eh stock theft. Na utolo sene inkomeni, kotoa enga nazin kom. Gu shu u ti genze u guti. Une omso bezwa moka tinte tis. Kotu trine na usu kate lawe, usu zatela we. I think yinto rega te si koka no minister. Eh kwanale u guti be konu xelu lugu ti si monitor ganja ni. Uguze i ingenzig. Le yemkuako eh si koto isol. Kimzwelu si si lapikuma ngomkuako asemtun. Eh always yoa eh oza we itu oma kati ngiaabonu kusezo zati ngidlamandak. Eh kama kato wa kumkuakolo ya. Kotwa si zo kubeho u guti si si zo nyobaschi lo. Isolo u guti gu, 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 gu kando yemkuak. I think ben kuluma no, no bab maya. Konu si sokale u guti. Itexi rank. Inde reza kulume ngalo eh 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 chair oh minister. Yongo boga manje. I think ngiape la u ekshawamez eh zu M C waga koka namtsange. Ngoba uzo, uzo buya u M C u zigalaala. Kotwa yuwa te esapumi le Egypt. He requested me u guti ngi ekchesa M C. Waga, waga, waga koka as well eh zu M C waga health. Joba u M C eh usmeland na yenke. Inde kona u guti njongo ba obone aban eh ranki movele. La ega tijeluka kona. Iaba kuenge weyindao. Yinga kobe kalwa yu crime. I move because i, i, i ranki original iya kando. Now le eh ekbewe kodi. It's just a temporal texti rank. Uguze guazukulunga eh le ranki ekon. Kotwa i ishe crime. We've noted it but Unusu minister zo kuluma ngayo ngoba. Nomak tiwa is a temporal eh texti rank. Kotwa kwanale u giliwe ne, ne, ne crime. Yinga kofane sba suwa zuti si bambe sana. Eh so mpagati no hulmen. Uguze suwa zuti si si ze aban bagit. Nga uti eh eh chair eh ilawa, awa itu zna kuluma ngav eh. Undus, si abong. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much eh M C. Minister over to you.
Sanbona esaid. Sanbona F F U. Sanbona wama jal. Sanbona mkoko. Sanbona patin. Sanbona wakolo kon. Sanbona ganzimaku. Sanbona wamkai. Sanbona wamkai. Sanbona washova shova. Sanbona popoy. Sanbona mashisun. Nga tansazazu nabagu. Sanbona mzuabantu. Sanbona nehati. Nambona nenpume hati wamanzin. Mea in umansiin. Astale smongu u guti si bena enye. Yala ekaya. Wa renkonien. Eh u renkonien. Sa sfundisa na izkoluin u renkonien. Eh sfundisa izkole nekiwa egwana bambo. Eh se otisha la na u renkonien. So omokuluma ngore renkonien, okulumenjenke kama skuluma ngomuntu tin. Esma zye sa kesamo. Nangno mesis konyena gekola. Oh mama wasekaya wakan konyen. So skuluma ngenda o na bantu esbazi. Ngia ngeljule kubeninda ba crime prevention. Ebwe yala eh renkonien, nikoni si izolaba ye parapak. Ebize u guti kubeninda ba. Ibe kona ngatitala kamalaka. Kotwa ninkama. Iblens izwebe zinda ba ye parapak. Ngaabona usata wele la kuli. Ibe kona, ibe kona crime prevention ibizwe u district command. Kotwa agusho lo u guti. Ngakekbuwe, ngakekwenziwe futabe konama. Kotwa isanda kba kona la eh renkonien. Gomchaga one, nangomchaga fourteen. U minister ama poisa no M C. Ba begle olo. Sa siklele, leli olo. Si zo kuluma no mpagati. Geninda ba yu yame ru amateris. Gomchaga one. Sa spagati lokshinwa maspala. Gomchaga fourteen. Sa sikle olo. Naba tso ba ni ngimpela aba puma okwin embonini amateks. So what you want to say u guti. Askalu kzala agioninda wesina inagile. Indao esda agion. Ngunezinto kwa kwanale si landele. Njongo mbiga u minister we transportezinye. Na, na, nange na. Yu yame. Ngoba guno yame mateksin. Ngiazo njaba ngapambili akulumal. Be avutape. Eh be avut. Gunemaliye paget. Ni ayas male paget. Ngaabona re. Makoa kokuma le pageta konu hamba. Makokuma le paget. Konu hamba. Ayina trace male paget. Awazi kisho ubani, awazi giekbani. So sabesa siya vumelana u guti. Zo kwanale si kulume na bantu ba gassars. Uguze bassisa ngobe bona ba guazuk trace imali na yonkin. Gikulmilege no shkogo waga sars. U guti kubene multi disciplinary committee here. Ngiaabong. Ngiaabong. Gube ne multi disciplinary approach here. Ama poisa no transport. Gobe ezini zinto suga. Eh, eh, enkingenza ka transport. Gubo maspala. Bese gu ba usars. Shestanganis zamukpegi ndaba yama teris u guti. Le male pagete kokoa yu. Esasi u guti ma pumi male paget. Konu xuliguzogwenze. Ma, ma, koka nje male pagete ranki zotuma. Zotuma, tatu muntu. So si zilege da si azande la lezo zin. Ogunye. Imeya yase mzuabantu. Umansiin. Se ui reze ga kuli nkinga zase, zase, zase mzuabantu. Siya vumelana na u guti mta bes, bes low. Gu level, le politigi u grespond. But gu konu kwenziwe si chumele itas team. U giope la lezinto za materis. Ngoba ishku u guti mzuabantu ngiafiwo. Emswa bantu. Ah, ah, abantu ba fanyanga zonke. Gu suga o April. April, maspala April twenty-two. Gu fe five, kuze be manje ba forty abantaba fe kon. Abantaba boshi we kona. Ba twelve. Amakala abo. Asenkantolo joba skulum. Kotwa si vumelene. No we province. Sa vumelana no me uzum. Nkinga re, mo i kantela no momnan u ba ubab kantela. No me ubab me, no nemnan. Sa vumelana u guti omso mblugo ozal. Siya emzuabantu giope la nende abasase mzuabantu. Ngoba siya abona ra lugu ti sinenkinga ngapeswa zo zonki ndao la okwin. So si zo guazi u guti shfike stale nanpans. Galo amso mblu. Niwa zuku ti skulumenani nisvezel. Ngoba gunesimo. Esinyesezimo ezibi. Nase mnabeni osanda kjuula lakshona ekona bantaba ngbutu. Ompagatiwa zase mzuabantu. Ukala akulu nama poisa essteshi seto yatink. So zofanele u guti suwa zukpendula. Namita njela. Si hamba. Nomkuzo ama poisa chigelele. Ule si sfunda zwe. U leftenant general mkuana suguma rak. Na njia nomkuzo ama poisa chigelele. Ule si sfunda zwe. Sagiti animbona. Nombona mayse ngagiin. Okay. Ogu esmili. Si hamba nomkuzo ama poisa gle si singisenu. Suguma mama. Bakbonu u guti wenokuzama poisa gle t district. Yea nomkuzi chigelele ama poisa gle t district sumama. Nizomba na sofie. Bese samba nomkuzo ama poisa guzwe longe chigelele. Ubab masimul, suguma masimul. Therefore, that's, that's how, okay. Astale nene, that's how serious are we taking you? That's how serious are we taking you? Askunige lapo si zo buya nabo. Masesia emzuabantu. Kwanze lugu ti nisrazilega alke. Bese na tis paramisi into zetu. I kalosetu. Njenga ama poisa imparatin. Nanin paramisi into zen. Niste ele ogunye shokela makfigatin. Ina bi kona lendaba yu guti ama poisaenzuguti. Niste lugu ti poise lupi gogwake pegi fe. Di tata manjote. Gube konatina. Iman mzuabantu, mzuabantu. Tulan mzuabantu. Gube konatina. Ngoba enyinten kalanga u guti. Manha misale informeshi. Ama poisa yahamba yu yela labantene ba treba yu. U gutu banu fige wati. Lapo ke gube konatina strebanti. Guo fanele mo funu kusbonu shu tusu utinal. Ipoisa elu sorensou laga bani. Di tata manjote. Ipoisa laga sorensou. Lenza ganje, linjonti inkomo. Ipoisa laga sorensou. Lingena lakja isakona ma drugs. Di pume, li na petelu to kotwa pete amanjote. Kwanze lugu ti. Sitile naola oma poisa ngo. Sinafigi, simepesgo ente abasmuzu u guti. Ilipi poise kupa yu la. Esmili omso bantu. Mzuabantu zlungsi lenene u guti. Tina nanisopega nukuso ngobuso omso mblugo. Aylo, lo la ndelayo. Siubezinda o nispega nukuso ngobuso. Si buzane spendulane se zamuktoleta zulun. Siya vumelana glo. Inde, inde paransiwe la. Eni ngikakulu. Ukshota yu ama poisa. No ukshota we itesi. No ngapenduli yu ama poisa eh itesi. Ama poisa yashote. Mai. Ngazi. Niste ele la sinilalele kuluma majan sa funu kusilale. Ama poisa yashote. Ama poisa. Ko, konote yangu anigi mal. Ugubaniwa mina ngabi ngakokitla bes. Ayinwa uhulmeni malama poisa. Ayinwa uhulmeni. Ngena yu guti. Bonka basewe zba gashulmen. Gui atiskaswa ama holabo. Kuchanga nundawonye. Bese niwa gleolevel ga hulmen. Na yu ngongo she. Gumbi umpatiso wa leo ndao. Agawa zuku ti atabami ba fageleni ukata. Otisha. Bonka zaba sebe zba gashulmen. Otisha. Abase ipegela ama poisa. Abase benza wanda abasabantu. Abase benza wa homafes na bobonke la bobantu. Ba joledwa geskali estile esenzewa uhulmen. Kotwa. Eh ama poise in kubene nkinga. Kubene nkinga yu u guti. Ispalos ama poisa sieriwé se. Go nyaga ka twenty-ten. Zastema poisa hundred ninety-six thousand. Atisha figure two hundred thousand. Go nyaga ka twenty-twenty-two. Sinema poisa hundred seventy-five thousand. Au twenty-thousand down. Go nyaga ka twenty-ten. Amanje South Africa babo fifty million. Go nyaga ka twenty-twenty-two babo sixty-three million. So ama poisa eh ya abantu bakupuk. Loko kwenzu u guti. Uksebenza yu ama poisa. Gunabonagali ina bi kola lendoktuwa invisibility. Guneyzatu ezimbalwa esenzaloko. Esinyeseyzatu. Mabuzaneno. Imali yama poisa nama social. Yone ike shulu yu guo twalisika la wama yama department. Gangano ba emya geni eh shu medul. Imali yama poisa ike shulu yu kwanale u guti kupugilu thirty-three billion. Therefore, ama numbers ama poisa. Ne itesi za ama poisa asglazuk sheja skupuk. Nokoge, noko. Uhulmen oko na panska mongame. Njenga manje ura ama poisa. Nompatiso we imali ubabu koto one. Babenomusa ekteni isanyuklungiswalon. Ayzulu nganoksheja. Linga akoglu nyaga. Eh ama poise in a college. Sinema poisa au ten thousand atrinali yu maskulum. Azopuma omchaga fifteen u December akriterega atisaga. Gu funu u itakris. Au ten thousand eh South Africa chigelele. Ningati until ten thousand okwin. Au ten thousand eh South Africa chigelele. Kotwa. M billion na gui history ama poisa. Siya kala oktrenama poisa au ten thousand eteku. Akaze kwanze. Is a first time. No kumbula u guti. Emya geni mbinejule awa trenuanga ama poisa. Ngoba wa unokovid. So kwa baneskaala. So u guti ama poisa aniipe. Ama poisa. Anga bi kona amasha nama ngani. Kotwa enyintinga. Ama poisa senge ngatela nao ngawa buzu. Because gule nyangejule ama poisa aritai na hambili. Do kumbulu u guti ama poisa kwanale retire no sixty. Kotwa washinju mtecho kwa tiwa angaritai manje eh no fifty-five. Gule nyangejule nje iyo twa. Ngisai nama poisa au three hundred and two hambili. Ayaham. Ayakoto. Ayemagub. Atakate. Ama poisa special suicide nnyanga zonka. Apakatiwa hundred no hundred and fifth. Ogu shu tla owa faka ezant. Ayapuma pezu. Any problem yala wa puma pezu. Iwana na experience. Entweni fana no penya nama tietizi na zozonke lezo zin. Because the experience. Awi yeleskole nu ito lefiltin. So sinenkinga yu u guti. Ma wabuza. Matota nballerani, matota kazi nballerani. Bata iskatelle, si trela u guti alima ka. Giswile. U guti niti. Gu zo fanele. Ku kashwe ama poisa akina gu age foot. Ngakeklung. Au ngake. Eh ama poise in retire no six, so u shu tino thirty years. Mo figu no four, u shu tino twenty years or eight. Ogu, ogo kala, ogo esmili. Kunama yu niti la ama poise in. Ekfanele ube ichampogwe. Upile ube uwe na. Gunema yu niti afana na la aba tiwa ama pagete. Oti aruti. Agione yu niti okuke la na ngase nimbona mto kukele gui ama pagete. Ngaabona. Aba, ma opupele mi angubona ama pagete. Owa pegi zisu ama pagete. Owa pegi su nje. Aliko ngiparete ndesisu. Aliko. Kona ngumswile ote, bas, na yushi lukazute, basa iteshi la baba kulpe. Konusi so shilo, uti, la baba nganga, lo si sobekuluma la, basa iteshi. Guba konama yoni itia tukeno NIU, no special task force, you only need young blood there. You only need young blood, you need to keep them longer, ema poisen. Eh, utere, sknek fort, gobba sknek forty-five, by the way, oguzutio inama poisa South Africa, kufanele, ube no thirty and young. Not, not, not thirty-five. But lega thirty-five, isikuluni wege, ya kuluni ya toku, angfunu kushoguti, izolu nga, no mo izulu nga, but as we speak now, you must be thirty and younger, oguzo siktumele, a college, yo kakashwa, oba impoisa, ukakashwa. Bese ya hamburger, yo specialize, siktumele ma collegeenda, one fana na Lego tabazimbe, lapu si yo funda, guba umshin. Gu, gu, kune yoni itia tu, special task force, ge bizang, ge human, ge human machines. Special task force is a human machine, agona ma human being. Labobantu, ngubona, si, si recruit a hundred, and you get one out of them, out of hundred, you get one. Aba qualifier, obama member, ma special task force. So, gekegulu, oba member, special task force. Ma qualifier one, gubantu abat between eighteen and thirty. So, but aseshu oguti, aseshu portle, up to thirty-five, but egafort, eh, sizo kweleguti, se, se, se lid. Ni para misi ndawa, eh, tir. Ama police station asema kar. Anako, ukuka, noba misplaced, abesin da, wena ngafane luka zon, nge police station asemtsinsin. Ni ayaz? Eh, eh, slalo, eh, police station asemtsinsin, isla ngabo shoakonya, je kala, nsa fundu, ngena, ninfan ngena je, la bo shoakla ya police station. First time ever, ngiboshwa, ngabo shoakla ya police station asemtsinsin, gisafu, gisafu, gisafu nde high school. Lea police station, ya ya keli stolo, wa unestolo. Sen kothiu kamalaso, eswai field. Ya ikati stolo, sasa hambe stolo. Isisale yoto, manje, isale mobe. Sikulmilege, nengosi ya ra kwabe. Anyezin, to kufane lita triswe, uyaya azumtunina. Oguti, masisusala pa, ya wa kolokolo, nomi ya ra kwabe yini. Ya wa? Ay wa kolokolo. Wa kolokolo? Wa kwabe. Kotwa, sikulmile, nama kosi, nengosi ya wandelu, sia kuluma na yo, oguti, zonke sia vumela, nukya isuge la pa la police station. I uslesla, ekonisemobe ni katumoba. Kotwa, kufanele ma isuga, ingene emparatin, ayda, nkosini ya wanza, ma wa kolokolo, no ma, yi ya ra kwabe, nkosini ya ra kwabe. Iloko ge kufanele sik finalize, manje, bese ge, landelu zidozakona, isusuwe, ihambela pa, kule ndao, yi parati, gwe emparati. Goba, yi kenparatin la ya kona, jenga manje. I leo. Bese kupa nala ma, nala ma setilite no ashol. Wa kufanele sambi se, isetilite wa mkae. Wa mkae, wa neti zulu, zanga wa zukfiga, kyo mug. Umkua post, kehli sospinse le mug. Wa mkae la esasi kona, abantu bakona, umabaye emzinto, wa kibela between fifty and seventy runs, mabaya pezu le san, eh, eh, eh. Ayda, ba bige emzinto, no ma ba yobiga, no te tropo man. Eh high flats. Eh saut. So, ba kibela ngemale fana yo, so, gwiya kenge, oguti, gubenento, ezobasizala. Eh, babmasimul, i, i, i kona, i kona, imopal seshi niya kona, kufanele si hambe se, wa mkae la esasi ya kona, eskolinda, sen kandol, kufanele fige, i, i, imopal seshi, nukuzenwazi, oguti, ninga kibeli ngemale ngaga, ubiyo biga, kotwa, bese akwa ne moto, ezotumu, oguti, nbige poli, nbige, wi mopal, gube yi moto, ezagnina, gu no oguti, gube inine, mkibe layo, ne kirezo ndao. Isi kona, jengoba, sasisile, sa, sa, gutile ile, je, wa kufanele oguti, sesa ilecha, i kona, i reti, imopal, ya, ya wa mkae. Ekamalak. Niya thura, oguti nikulmala ye, because it's one of the biggest police station in Ekamalak. Ngulu ne? Ekamalak, wa kufanele si zo ilonj. Four days before so ilonj, wa neti zulu, amanza, sha imatoluwe. Angazi nommsin doal, yo nyama, no moa. Kotwa, sachi, wa, sasa si reti, es, es snegile, es snegile upublic wets. Oguti zo ivula, la ne zulu, wangena amanza, sha imatoluwe, ngapa rati. So, zaskazu wazi ge, ugulivula, wa kufanele oguti glo miswalezo zinto. Ufigile gumi aleso, ema sonto enama biliya dule, oguti, bat ela si zo ivula, ngenjele yio, i police station aseka Malak. Goba, kune nkinga, ya mapoisa, angasbeenzin ngenjele yio, futi, liya kula, i crime, Ekamalak. Engak understand, babo Mkhana. Not is, oguti why value, i police station aseka Malak? Mtaumbi. Ba, ba, isozizi leadership ama kanzela, no masesuwa la, basbona kantane, ba kuri taza, because, axo, nistyeshe, sifane luka valua, ngentele skulu nga aso. Is a big police station. Is a big police station, ekati mia ga ya kiwa, sisuwa, ma preferpo, si station, is a big, is a new, new police station. Oguti is valua, ngoba kwenze njaali, namengeke ngas. Kotwa, kufanele ngwazi, oguti, kusuka manje, giya pambili, ayzovalu, Ekamalak, jere police station. Uzo fanele zonke skati, sibenabantu kona, ekzo fanele sambela, gulungsiwe, oguti logo. Eh, ezinye iteshi, sbanana, sbeguti, sbele, this is iselokshini, sikulu, sisha, well built and new. Eh. Am, amasyeshi, ala, erenko yen, slo kokwen, akakren. Yabona nje, moukwa mesomiyama, ubali, luka moukwa mesomiyama, eh, an, an, angazi, oguti, angazi, goma anzoluangi, no makfola anda, mesomiyama, no makfola anda, i high flats. Kotwa, no ma ngabo, usuke high flats, we ya goma anzoluangi, agatu shul, no mu sugu, goma mesomiyama, we ya kona, is quite a distance. Ifola anda, goma anzoluangi, ina panska, goma mesomiyama. Is a long distance, uksuka glazain ndao, you know? Mtaumbi, eh, Malume Parliament. A province, na national. Ezinye, ezinye, to kufanele si ivu, manje, oguti, ashe lumsa. You know, ma, ma sugu la, ma, ma sugu la, kune syeshe pojepsin. Kune syeshe market, guben syeshe pojepsin, guben syeshe south port, guben syeshe hipatin. Zonke, is, is almost twenty fifteen k, zonke sambetye, nde samba highway. So, the zityeshe, they belong where they were meant to be, we did not change them, kune syeshe potetwa. Zonke school juu loang, and you must remember, twakala ban o loang. Zaza kwele, la baba betal o loang. And as this, as this government, we have not much interfered with that system. I want to admit that, we have not, some of these stations should have moved. Joba, need us move, esasapote twa, mtaumbi, no ma, no ma zgasamu vanga, but this service must be taken to people, because, I just imagine, ma sugu, ma sugu, a potetwa, where stations asesengolwen, you drive a very long distance. Angtul, eh, ngoba ngtul. Mtaumbi, ngoba logo, butatiskatesit. Provision commish, eh, national commish. Omgenandi, ama tuluso, uksebenza, afane luka kona. Anyezinto, ekzo fanele si lungise, ilezi moto, oguti is late, wazin ndao. And nilate i moto, zoksebenza glazin ndao, because, ma wo sebenza, esingo, says gole ngonj. Says golwen, no say ngole. Okay, ma wo sebenza, eh, ngole, no men golwen. Au zutati moto, enanuwele lenyai, wa lapetwa lean. Kufanele moto, eh, parame, so, uzo fanele squazu glata, i moto, esirrelevant. Oh ma, singa kawi movie, ama service, ugu ya, kule zin ndao, kotwa squazu, utabantu bagwazi, og move from point A to point B. Gukalo ngama poisa A, to oguti, awasbeenzatata manjot. I've been explaining this thing. Oguti, policing is not the job. Aguano msebenz. If funu msebenz, ya wa Coca-Cola. Omufu msebenz, ya wa ShopRide, ya wa, okay, this is a service. So, abantu, abatjona mapoisa, they must understand, that joining the service, not the job, is not the job. Hamba, yo funa, msebenze, ma femi, ma uzala, uzo joina, is service, that's why it's important. Oguti, abantu, sebenza nabu, spare mind, oguti, they are providing the service. Kona, or is a issue, yo oguti, bat ela mapoisa patigache, abantu besfazana ba abuse. If you are a member of the South African Police Service, and you can't do that, you have no business to be in this organization. Not whatsoever, if the woman comes to station, isobiga, oguti ya abuse wa, irashiwe, assaultive, you don't tell that woman to go and negotiate, is not your job. If we poisa tend to negotiate, come to us, we'll send you to Ukraine and Russia, we'll negotiate a call. But here, is to respond, oh hambi, uyega yonki doenza yo, usize, umuntu, ozo reporter, a police station, igakulu, young people, children, elderly, and abo mama, ama poisa must rise, and make sure that they respond quickly to protect labobantu. Lesityeshe ni, balii. Eh, chair hipatin. You said how many stations is here? Sixteen. You say sixteen? Sixteen. One six. That they fall within rengonyen. That they fall within oguti street. Kona, inkale ngas. Oguti, aswenzo msebenz. I don't know why neki secretariat la. Secretariat, oh, secretariat is here. Una ma department ama bili, assebenza, no minister wa mapoisa. Ektuwa, I pit, ne tuwa secretariat, assebenza, upega i kalu, ma poisa. Secretariat, there are few stations that issues were raised here about. I want you to work with the district commissioner next to you, also to work with the CPFs, to get those, there are three that you mentioned, and you provide to the ministry, full report about those station in next four weeks. So that we know what to fix, so that la oma poisa, they are able to answer for themselves about the issues that have been raised about themselves. As you do that, don't go there secretly, announce your coming, so that the communities around can be able to speak to you, and give you the problems about their stations, so that you are able to respond to those police stations. And I'm sure, we as a ministry are also expected to provide that report to the NCOP through the chair. So, help us in four weeks to deal with those stations. But when you come, come with your counterparts, I pit, I pit, I know is here, where are you, I pit? Semnyango. No, I pit is here. Is, is only the head that is not here, because he's writing exam today, but somebody was sent, I pit is here. As you come, so that the community has an opportunity to raise their matters of criminality from the police with the I pit, so you'll come as a pair, and you bring back that report. So, our community must have the access to those structures, secretariat and I pit. Ah. Eh, Chair President, I, I don't know, or is my NPA here? No, 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 ah, there are things that I raise about, things like eh, 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 page. Because, ama poisa get bashed in a page. Yeah, they get bash in a page, ama poisa, and ama poisa sometimes themselves, they suffer out of a page. So, it's one thing, that some mapoisa were giving a backlash, because people, they say, you arrest these people, and they come out in a week's time, is what they tell, when, not they tell what, by ama poisa. So, it's, 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 it's always good to explain those things, that were together, we explain them together, because sometimes, police themselves do get frustrated, indaba, indaba zepage, but lo, loco is within ourselves as a cluster, that we need to work together, and then, sisi zane, etenumparati, they get the better service, because we're working together as a cluster. So, I understand, oguti, I, I, I hear you, honorable member, you are asking, where is Lamula? Eh, but you know, ama minister are not, are not brothers keeper. Ama minute, so, ama ministers, nama members of parliament, no president, that you send the ministers in those particular areas, but I wanted to raise that, because somebody did raise the issue in page, oguti, i page, gage, gage, though i problem, but i problem, na sina mapoisen, so it will be good, oguti, si bambesane, excellence, lenene, go. Sen kulmilege ngama poisa la nesa, kye, nsa funa manje, gen, pifon kala pants, gen kulumen gani. Then Kulumanga. You know. Somebody raised an issue there. Eh, I, I'm not to tell upuma. Upuma, a market. No, my god, it's ma. When you buy a stolen article. Labantu who are breaking in houses. Banjo, I'm a TV. About John, Jerry, look what Boogie is, la omatv. Banjo, Jerry, look what they is. La omatv.
She went to a police station. We have dealt with nine local police. This husband or boyfriend, Yak Wabooshu. As I phoned her four days down the line, asking how are things going? She said, Minister, I'm sorry, because she's putting a pressure on me to withdraw the case against this abuser. That young woman works for correctional services, Epito. Wouldn't I had to leave my house, my home? Because Uma says I must withdraw the case of the man that tries to kill me every day. So families must find a niche of dealing with gender-based violence. Families must. We're making that call. If fifty percent of these people are raped in their own houses. I was looking at statistics. People are raped on the parks, on the roads, but they are less than the people that are raped in their own houses. Where are we? Where are we as families? Where are we as communities? Abane, they negotiate rape, you can't negotiate rape. You can't negotiate rape. You can't negotiate rape. I guess all of us, we must rise and say no to rape, enough is enough. That's the reason why our police were getting harder on them, especially those that don't help the victims of rape. And communities, they must also talk about them. Alright. Seeaboya, geda. Eh, angiyisho le, ngoba singa tingsabi, lugiyisho start. Any anyama problem is nayo, ama police aike bing. Sam, aike bing. Isolo, gua pereisha, ama police au tuwa sem komas. Gokbula labantu. Nomanga kaprova, ayasolwa, ngokbula la ekantela umlif. Alkato kbulawa, ama police aboshiwengaloko, S7 station, emkomas. Therefore. Fanele S7 zima, uklina eh eh tu inju. We must work hard to clean ourselves. We must work hard, ugo ta ama police aswa kumbuzuguti, and the service, afane lukproteka, afane lukvigela labobantu. La. Gune, gune team, actually is a political team, S7 KZN. Seshkaligus preta, nasimpumalanga, nasistinkape, ngoba ina konasibekopishili KZN le ukbulawa wa makantela. By the way, abanta baboshelu, ukbulala makantela, nabandbe politi, KZN peta, there are more than three hundred. And among them, there are police, almost forty of them. So, we're not going to sit here and deny ugo ti, it's a number problem, nati within. But, enga zuk vuma. Hunalenda bya, se Western Cape, yak jaji turan. Ugo tu turan, utama police, ase Western Cape. Aike bing. Yak vumela judge. But everybody here speaks about aike bing, zamapolis. Each judge did not talk about police. You go and read that judgment. Read paragraph seventy of the judgment. Each judge, Liti. There've been a penetration of gangstarrism to police, to courts, to judiciary, and NPA. Each judge, Liti song, esliwa, amakanstarrs, opke bing. Yanizo, inkulmanga, ama police akpe, inkulmanga, hambofund, uti judgment itini. Therefore, it's a whole cluster that we need to deal with. While I can't protect the police, but I could not agree that everybody speaks about the police. When the judge puts it very well. Each judge puts even the judiciary, ugo ti, has been penetrated by gangstarrism in Western Cape. Agushomi, ushuturani judge. Hambofund, uyagukulmanga, entoyizwanga bantu, kulmanga, entoyefundi. So, siso vumela nage la, abu. Ugo ti. We must go back and work. Premier of Western Cape has put already, always getting ready to put the ombudsman to work on it. Amapolis are putting. Management to work on that, IP will be working on that. But I want to know, ugo ti, who's putting on prosecution? Who's putting on judiciary? Who's putting on courts? Because you can't clean one segment when the judge, the whole segment, segment, the whole cluster in Western Cape, around other places, is penetrated by the gangstarrism. So, that's what, that's what the judge says. So, we need to work on that. So I'm calling even on the members of parliament to help us. Ugo ti, si klinen songe, ma toto, asnolanga, soto, zamapolis. Klinan yonki inju, yakwa cluster, akshonu fele, usho each judge. Astanga nenige, ngomso mlu goloa. Mta ilaguzabantu, basemzwa bantu akpe. Ninge, zin sugelimzumbe, nagama dala. Sofika ngakilin, na, ngeli nila. Ogwa manje, seea kon. Eh. Le police si ilbope la, lamateki, si koytumiya, ngaga, one hundred and sixty-five. Lakimnagi. Lelele, ilbulala bantu, ma mateki. Yas, smopi police, salkuwaba, one hundred and sixty-five years. Around here, le, le, le ngela, le, le luizimpi, zamategis. Le, 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 yakashukbulala bantu, ma mategis, yakashukbulala bantu, be politi, yakashukbulala bantu, be keshais, len, lenzayonke, lenzayonke inju. Si wazile, ugo ti, si ilbope, le tola, one hundred and sixty-five years. At least we are trying to clean our own house. Seeakelage, ugo ti, S7 san, embonini, si was, ugo ti, is clean, abantu, benbon, bezengapambila. I know many of, many of TELSI owners, by the way, abala, lenjinza. Balala, we zinja, obasaba, na bautu. So, there is that criminality across the industry, there is criminality across the politics, and those are the things that we must work together and make sure that we clean those things. You go and be safe, and we will be getting this information, we will be working with you, ugo ti, what to do. Eh, ngama police, si was, obamsonanan, we will be arresting, as we are arresting. I've said to you, twelve people that have killed people, hurting, have been arrested. We are continuing to make sure that more people get arrested. We just hope, ugo ti, those people will be, will be sentenced. Hampani, keni, enjoy, kisimusi. Nireze, one other thing, that is across the, across the government, to say, ukulmanga, fanele, toli, S7. I am S7, ngoba, I don't care how much effort we put, if young people don't work, we're not going to deal with the crime in South Africa. There have to be way that the government provide more jobs so that we are able to, to stabilize the situation, to show how serious the thing is. As we took ten thousand people last year, five hundred thousand metriculants applied. Five hundred thousand, and they're not working. After that, we wanted some graduates, ama forensics, NPSA. We wanted two hundred of those BScs, fifty-seven thousand of them applied. So, it's a question of dealing across the government. If I say across the government, starting from local government, province, national, all of us, working together to create better life for the people, especially the young people, so that those people are absorbed in the proper way and will reduce, reduce the crime. Let's make sure that women are safe, children are safe. Let's make sure that we create the situation where a young woman, in the middle of the night, can walk alone without the fear of men, without the fear of being attacked by the brother, by anybody that is a man. And men, remember, you have no rights over the body of women. Women are not made for your own pleasures. Women are fully fleshed human beings, they have all the right to be free, they have all the right to live free. Thank you very much. Seeabonga kolu, eh, general makae. Eh, gitavanguti, uspendule, gognenge. Eh, wastneka, namkombalde, lugu ti, sngaya ngala, masfis ugo ti, sese zagale. Eh, swonge, yutu makae, osi, akbona, galagale, lapanle, lakona, uti konala, National Commission, ama police, uchernmasemo, la, kaino, nondo, ngaka, uchernmkuwana, zola, we KZN. Again, konafuti, u, National Commission, ama Correctional Services. Eh, u, u, uzawetukela, weyang, cheltai, misuwanga nda, oh, nyusem, kade, ngasekaya. So, utu sem, tobachale, kaino, professional commission, na, u, umnunza, ngale. So, seeabonga kolu. Eh, gitavanguti, sifikare, manje, ema petewin. Eh, uzos valela, u, u, omshonishwa, la. But before that, gi fisajutambe, gi tatituba, yu ugo ti, gi bonke, injela, S7, gatengaayo. Si tolise, yu ugo ti, eh, benke, ewenzee, yu ugo ti, skwazo, kulmasonke, kota, ngia fisutmakona, yu bu na, tiksalile, sikpale panzi, sikusela payana. Kudinswesela, kmeni, mpela, kuwe, ipate, yegambi, satswani, zupali, bui, si pepa, ilbulisanga, la, lopepa, kmena. Nsa, nilbuisa, lopepa, guvuta, balao, benzo, akala, luipete, kambi. Nomavela, itini, inti, wey crime, koto, abeguta, wajolitini, 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 pewe, na. Eh, si, bonganga kuluwe, ituba, ugo ti, sifiki, ne, lasonke, sapatanakale, salalela, sabeki, zinfozetu. Si bonge, nabashonishwa, abakwazi, lugu ti, ba, kulume, eh, baspendule, u, emsi, u, shomura, kwazo, vala, omakae, ominissa, ama police. Eh. Koto, enfiskut, si tate, kakula, zamatoata, lora, vala, ngaku, makae, matota. Gitale, ugo ti, si tate, ngampale, ugo ti, abanbeswazane, agbe, bavigelu, bangashogunyesu. Sela, yesi, matota, si tate, lora, ugo ta, abanbeswazana, bavigelu, bangashogunyesu. Ma, u, uzgutai, ufusukshaya. Aweye, weyinse, zwa, ye, nomoto ngenda, pulushaya, uzututongala, zupendudalitini. Koto, mapasungu, la, wezabota, ayubama, ngapsamtinta. Eh, seeabonga kolu, eh, honour, eh, eh. Sheikh, can you please close for us? Si, agachene, mpela, svalen, bezia, hamba, gale, kuneme, mme, zele, sazo, wenzewa.
Thank you very much, co-chair. Um, let me take this opportunity to thank the Minister of Police, Minister Begikale, the EMC, Thlamuka, the mayors who are present here. Uh, the community of Ugu district. I think in terms of the session, many problems were raised, and the minister and the EMC responded to those. As parliament, we've listened to your issues. And the, and the minister and the EMC have made some commitments to you. The NCOB and the Select Committee on Security and Justice will follow up on these matters. There were matters that were raised related to the Department of Justice and Correctional Services, and I think on this one as well, as a Select Committee on Security and Justice, that we will make the necessary follow-ups. Um, I think the issue raised by the minister also with regard to the need to cleanse the entire criminal justice system of thugs, I think this is a matter, even as parliament, that we should be looking into. I have one announcement to make, in that refreshments will be served at their usual place. Furthermore, the next session, which will take place at two PM, will deal with, uh, it will deal with human settlements, and will convene again at, at two PM. Let me thank you all, seeabonga. The session is closed. Walandela, yo.
Seeabonga kolu.
The National Council of Provinces is taking Parliament to the people of Kwazulu Natal from fourteen to eighteen November twenty twenty-two. Taking Parliament to the people is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of parliament, provincial legislatures, and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings, where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People twenty twenty-two. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.za. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better. The National Council of Provinces is taking Parliament to the people.
And, and, and this has been carried out over and over again in the, in the past. We have a responsibility. And out of this.
We are here as delegates coming from National Council of Provinces because we take Parliament to our people. We are happy up to so far, since we are here this morning, to do our oversight to this project. The other challenge that we have seen is just to talk to the, eh, eh, the, the, the project manager, to make sure that they communicate with other stakeholders, like communities and business, so that at the end of the day, the project will move swiftly.
Cases that relate to ensuring greater, eh, eh, safety, and, and that people, eh, they must feel, eh, safe, eh, across the length and breadth of the country, are followed up and so on. So this, this will be a case in relation to every other, 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 other ministries.
Yes.
So in a ongoing way, we keep giving people feedback.
Yes.
And some of the debates, eh, in the NCOB.
Yes.
Will be reflecting the discussions that are taking place, eh, here. Including, amongst, for instance, the killing of councillors.
Yes.
A very contagious issue, eh, eh, and, and it can't just be left.
Yes.
It must be, it must be addressed.
Yes, just in closing, Chairperson, your overview, we are on day three, to, you know. Today is in fact the very final day of public hearings and site visits. Your just in short, brief overview of the, the program thus far.
Eh, my sense is that the, the program has been, eh, 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 a great success. Eh, eh, and, and that, and that in, 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 indeed, we may not be where we are supposed to, to be. Eh, but clearly, eh, eh, there is a sense, and all indication, eh, eh, are that we are making progress, eh, and that what we need to do is to redouble our efforts and really ensure that, eh, these matters are addressed.
Yes.
And addressed meaningfully.
Okay, thank you so, so much, Chairperson, for joining Parliament Television. And we hope, next year, anytime you decide as the head of the institution, this Taking Parliament to the People will be taken further. Um, that was Nday Masondo, our Chairperson of the National Council of Provinces, giving us his overview as well as giving an update as to the visit, the site that he visited. Just stay tuned because next is Minister of Police, Nday Begikale.
We visited the South Port Police Station. We met the leadership under the command of Captain Sin, SIS, together with the team. We were doing this because we were performing our oversight function to check the status quo in terms of the police station. What are the issues, what are the challenges? What is it that the police station is doing as part of preventing crime, and investigating crime, and arresting the perpetrators who are responsible? Our general impression is that the police station is operating fairly well. It deals with the challenges of the hour, the challenges that it's confronting. However, there are issues that we think need to be followed up. For example, the issue of rape and GBV rate is very high. It needs to be given the necessary attention. The, the, some policemen have got to log their appropriate books and ensure that it's up to date. That we need to ensure accessibility of the roads in respect of coronaic crime. We need to address issues of load shedding here, so that the police station is fully steam, is fully running. For us, that is quite important. But in the overall, we think that the police station is doing quite well. It was good to hear from the officers, how they dealing with the crime, the challenges and the frustrations that they are experiencing.
Welcome back, we have just concluded the hearing on safety and security. We will be, now, we are in fact now joined by the Minister of Police, Nday Begikale. Welcome, sir, to Parliament TV.
Thank you very much for the invite and be part of this situation in Ugu region.
Yes, the people were robust, the people were outspoken, they spoke about issues of gender-based violence, policing, and so on and so forth. But, what I would love, Minister, before you give your overview, and the importance of, you know, how you see the importance of taking Parliament to the people. I would love us to talk to, to this issue regarding the CPF, CPA, and the police relationship.
Well, eh, well, as a police, eh, I don't want to blow our own horn.
Yes.
We, we have lot of this kind of engagement as, as a police. Today, we, we join Parliament. Um, these things are raised, the relationship between the police and, and the community. But it was much sharper, and it was in very nice, not very good to hear that the relationship here is, is not very good. Remember, policing is anchored on relationship of the police as law enforcement and the community structures, other CPF's, other neighborhood wash and all that. Not only that, even last two State of the Nations presidents has emphasized the thing. Even Professor, Professor Afrika, when he relooked at the, at the issue of violence in July, in KZN, in Khauti, she sharply raised the thing that we'll have to work hard on the relationships of the communities and the police that was lacking, hence, eh, police could not be assisted. So it's one thing that, eh, we will be working on already, as you heard, that the secretary has been put to come especially around those police sessions that seems to be not behaving, so that we get the report, and then we begin to have a program of working between eh, the police and the communities to fix the relationship.
And, and as well, Minister, there was a, um, a, an issue that was raised with regards to young people just going to taverns, and others that come from the, the urban areas, going to villages, making, then changing the, the setup in the villages, where they do not know issues of, you know, abuse of these substances and so on. What does the police, what can the police do in that, or how can you respond to the public?
Look, look, that's not a police issue, that's an issue for sociologists.
I knew that was.
And social, and social regard.
Yes.
Police can't be stopping or arresting people from moving from urban to rural, rural, and vice versa, and all that kind of thing. Unless their movement causing some crime. People did raise issues about the police, eh, turning a blind eye on criminal issues, eh, like, eh, like, eh, the shippings that don't close on time. Police need to enforce the law, there must be a law on the thing. Police going to the known drug dens, eh, but business continue as if nothing has happened. So we need to, we need to look at that. When our police begin to be consumed by criminal activities themselves, eh, there, there, where the issue as the ministry and management, you must, we, we, we must respond. And unfortunately, we can't deny, that's a point I made.
Yes.
Because we have arrested police, eh, who really have involved themselves, eh, in, in criminal activities. In this place, fortunately, I was here June first and June four, July first and July fourteen, dealing with especially the taxi issues.
Yes.
We have arrested one member of the South African Police Service, has been sentenced already, two hundred and sixty-five years.
What?
For, for, for things that is, is, he has done not supposed to do, and things that was supposed to do, did not do. So, eh, 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 I, I, I can't go around and say that police are not involved in those matters. Eh, it is important that the structures that I work with, the secretary, the IP, they help us to clean our own house, even before we are able to work with the communities. One point I make, and every time I make, police is not the job. Policing is not the job, like going to the, to, to, to anywhere, Coca-Cola, Shobra, is a service. If you come here and you are seeking for a job, you are at the wrong place. We are here for service. So, a service means you reduce yourself and you put yourself at the service of the people at all costs.
Yes, and, and also, Minister, there is a, a challenge that is basically also direct to this area of Rainkonyeni municipality. Um, and our members from parliament, from the National Council of Provinces, visited SII, a police station, I think it's, if I'm correct, it's Short Port.
South Port.
South Port, South Port, eh, eh, police. South Port, South Port Police Station. And they are citing issues of human resources, lack of vehicles and even budget allocations.
Well, that is a national problem that we are facing at the present moment. I did make the point inside that. 2010, I was a national commissioner, we had 196,000 police, we were close to 200,000. 2022, we have 175,000, we are 20,000 down. And that time population was 50 million, now it's 63 million, which means the visibility and ratio of a police to public has decreased. There are several reasons. Maybe some people in the different administration, they realize that if you need to increase maybe on social departments, your education, your health, they had to cut from the security class. Let us come back to bite us because things like business are not going to flourish if we don't deal with the security issue. But the fear that is there of the people, it also puts a black spot on the running of the life of the people. So it's important. And the last two years, we could not recruit because of the COVID.
Of COVID.
So thanks to the President Cyril and the present Treasury have put some resources. That's why this year, we have trained 10,000 of the new recruits. They will be out of the stations come December 15 and next year we'll take 5, 5, 5 going forward. But that will give us 25,000, which will give us a number for 2010, not a number for 2022. So it's a long way to walk. So this human shortage is going to be with us for the, we must learn to do more with less. But things like cars, we'll have to really work on them so that people, they have access. But stations themselves, people, there is the issue that they look back and all. Unfortunately, those are not done by the police, are done by our sister department, Public Works. But we are working together with Public Works to try and fix those things.
And Minister, another issue that was raised by the, was sharply raised by the community was stock theft. Because you know, people are farming, people need their produce to be well secured. What is the department doing in that regard?
Well, we have a stock theft unit especially around these areas, farming communities. But that's not enough, as I'm saying to you. Human element, human personnel within the police is really less. So it's not enough. The issue of stock theft, we need to deal with it by increasing, even increasing the equipment. I visited, I think it was Beckville, the border of KZN and Lesotho with the stock theft thing. People were making the call to say, we don't need these helicopters in the cities. You have good roads, you have good cars. We need helicopters in those areas to be able to chase the stock as it crosses the border and all that. So it's one area I agree that we'll have to improve both in personnel, on the equipment, but also with the relationship of the communities. There is a structure called the SCAP, though many people are raising serious issues about it, that itself takes the law in their hands sometimes themselves, including the police that are working on the stock theft themselves. They become the stock theft to people rather than working on it. So it's one area that we are looking. And you must remember, you must remember, there are people that have worked all their life for the head of 30, 40. So they even make the point to say, when the bank is robbed, we run around like headless chicken, we send helicopters, we send everybody. But when they come and sweep and clean your crawl for the work of your lifetime, we don't take those things serious. I think stock theft thing, especially for the African people, that is their bank.
Yes, very sentimental.
Is their bank sentimental and their wealth, by the way. So we'll have to do better, I agree.
Yes, Minister, this one, the Chairperson just spoke to us now. Regarding the killing of the councillors as well as the leaders. And it's not really now, it started in the KwaZulu-Natal province, but it looks like it's now spreading, as you know that there was a councillor recently killed in the north-west in Rustenberg. So how can this be kept so that it doesn't really become a pandemic?
It started in this province, but there are two, I hear about the northwest. But there are two provinces that are complicating it much faster than others. That is Bumalanga and Eastern Cape.
Yes.
President instructed us, I think 2018, 2019, instructed us to create a special team in KZN to care for that thing. Indeed, that team is called, is a task team on political killings. We've arrested more than 300 people in KZN alone. Because of this killing spreading, I'm sure, maybe the police have begun to squeeze the space here. They're spreading to other areas as well. Also, we're trying to convert the team to move from being a task team to a permanent team that will be working on other provinces. In Haute, it's also, there are four provinces now that are there. It will be Haute, KZN, Eastern Cape, Eastern Cape and, yeah, four. But western, northern, northwest and Limbombo.
Yes.
Remember Limbombo, they've killed the mayor there. But the police have responded very well in Limbombo. Almost everybody in Limbombo is just like here in KZN, everybody. But the problem, it doesn't help much to respond after people have died. We need to develop the methodology of prevention so that while it's good to arrest, but the person is gone, can't come back.
Yes. Lastly, Minister, I know I'm holding you, you need to leave. Lastly, your view, your review about this taking Parliament to the people and what happened today, the hall was full and the people spoke to you. What is your review between, you know, as the executive arm as well as the legislative arm?
You know, I hear people bashing the ministers. I'm one of those ministers who is bashed about so interference of to be in the crime scene and all that. Let me tell you, the time will never come where parliamentarians, where public representatives will have to stop to go to the people. The time will never come. It's a painful, it's a bittersweet time. People, they talk, they talk their mind, they don't care who are you in front of them. They tell what is in their mind. But that also shapes your understanding, how better you work with them. For instance, come the next Monday, we're coming back to this, we'll be in Hating in Mzobantu, where from April up to this point, 40 people have been killed. So the community there is calling on us, we have to sit down. They're complaining about the police, they're complaining about the other structures and all. We need to come. And while you hear the thing, while news people tell you, it has no gist and weight like you hear from them. This thing of they tell you as is, it makes you to understand better. So I pity for those people that don't go to this Isimbezo to listen people talking. And I want to tell you, you go there much wiser and much willing to work to resolve the people's problems because you understand them better.
And even much, much better and saving the people. As we say in Parliament, we are committing to the people and wanting to make their life better.
Better.
Minister, thank you so, so much for joining Parliament TV, just two minutes. That was Minister of Police Ndebe Begikeli talking to us about the plans that the department has to deal with in terms of crime and safety and security in Ugu district as well as the country at large. Please don't go away as we will be now joined just in few minutes by Chairperson of the National Council of Traditional Leaders, Kosi Siatholo.
We are here as delegates coming from National Council of Provinces because we take Parliament to our people. We are happy up to so far since we are here this morning to do our oversight to this project. The other challenge that we have seen is just to talk to the project manager to make sure that they communicate with other stakeholders like communities and business so that at the end of the day, the project will move swiftly.
Welcome back. As we promised, that we will be with Kosi Siatholo, who is the Chairperson of the National Council of National Traditional Leadership. We are with him now. Sir, welcome, Kosiak.
Radu medicine.
Just to begin, there is an issue, there was an issue that I asked also the Minister of Police with regards to the relationship between the police, the CPA and the CPF. I just want to extend it to say, how is that relationship between the traditional leadership and the police in the larger communities?
Now, Kialebuka, can we maybe start with the CPF? The CPF are right in our communities. They work on the ground basically just to assist the police with issues of criminality. We work very well with them. Most of the time when they are established, they are established in our traditional courts when the community is called and then they elect whoever they think is capable to assist on issues of criminality, particularly stock theft as the biggest problem.
Yes.
So there is that relationship that we have with the CPF. It's working very well. I think the main problem is with the police themselves rather than the CPF.
Yes. And then, Kosi, you know, crime amongst, in communities, as you heard, you just also mentioned the issue regarding stock theft and gender-based violence, which was there, which wasn't really a common occurrence in the villages, especially when we were growing up. What does, or how can traditional leaders assist in keeping this challenge?
I think, you know, the question is valid. Prior to 1994, communities were very active participants in running the community together with the traditional leader and the traditional council. But post 1994, we have sort of become passive whereby everything is given to government to, you know, to solve the problem of crime and all of that. So I think we, because we realized that there's such a huge gap, we have no choice as communities but to go back and look at various ways. I mean, Motuana Nalaba, Tuaner Kemale Tamotsi.
Yes.
Yes, those were some of the people that used to ensure that stock theft is kept. Whenever there's a lady, perhaps the husband has passed on, they would ensure that they look after the lady, she's not attacked that night. So those are some of the things, you know, that were left with the 1994 era and we have no choice but to bring them back now. Because issues of, because in our rural areas, there's a lot of female-headed households and they are highly vulnerable. So we need those kind of structures to come back to assist. And even with, you know, very young females, it's not only maybe an old lady. You'd have maybe an 18-year-old who's left with two of her siblings, all parents has passed on. You know, that kind of a young lady is highly vulnerable with the high levels of crimes.
And also, the issue that has basically also gotten into many villages that, you know, shippings or taverns are a common thing, especially even for younger children. And these children that you are speaking about, that would be child-headed families and all that, maybe to distress, they go to these taverns at a very early age. How can the traditional leadership assist or play oversight on this?
Children generally, you know, when you grow up, there has to be a platform for you to do what your age mates are doing, you know, mainly daddy sports activities. So currently, we find that a lot of villages do not have those, you know, particular facilities whereby our kids can go and play soccer, our kids can go and do tennis now and all other sporting activities that are there. So I think the lack of development from the side of government and bringing those avenues where young people can go and do those activities, they are sort of left with no choice but to go where everyone is going. So it's important that we, as traditional leaders, we press government to bring relevant services to the villages. They should not only be seen in towns and metropolitan areas. Rural people also deserve the same facilities.
Yes. And, Kosi, you have just been elected into this position. What is your vision going forward as far as the House of Traditional Leadership is concerned?
We have to deal with the issue of identity crisis. It's fortunate that the younger generation is more confident with identifying themselves as Africans.
Yes.
That's what we need to deal with. But also, we need to try and extract the economic value out of our culture. I think that is why maybe a lot of young people are not really interested in culture per se because they do not see the economic value. But with other communities, they identify with their cultures because they are able to live through it. So now for a young Motuana person, it's not really important to follow thoroughly issues of Sijwana because they cannot even give you a job. You know, it's a question of what are you going to eat tonight? Can Sijwana assist you to have a meal on the table? So those are some of the issues that we will be looking at in the next five years.
Yes, which has done a lot. You think about the late WHOHP, you think about Duk Singanga, you think about the poets that are there and not only the Batuana ones. You think about the traditional Sijwana music, anywhere they play that kind of music or the dance. People are so much, you know, interested and attracted to the display of that kind of culture. But we are not there. I just wanted to support you saying that you want to improve on our culture as a people, as the country, not only the Batuanas, but coming back, spluma at and the traditional leadership.
Yeah, you know, what the spluma is trying to do is trying to sneak in municipal governance. It's very wrong and we have expressed ourselves properly to national government to say municipality has to deal with municipal issues. The land belongs to us as traditional leaders and our people. We do not need interference of the municipality. I mean, we have been administering land for as far as the world existed. So why would you want to bring someone to come and assist us now? So we have told the national government that we are not interested in that, they must go and review. Of course, we have no problem with assistance of special planning in principle. What we have a problem with is when now we are co-administering the land together. we are co-administering the land together because we are not administering municipal land with the municipality. Why would they come this way?
Yes, and, Kosi, just lastly, you are here attending Taking Parliament to the People of the NCOPE, rightfully so. What would be the role of National Traditional Leadership in this program?
Firstly, we are here to note what our communities are saying as we continue to engage government on various issues of national importance. We would be further informed by what you said. If you listened to what has been said just today, the biggest issue was stock theft. That means we need to sit down with national government and say really, what is the strategy around stock theft in the country? Because it's the only livelihood of rural people. If it's taken at such a rapid pace daily, then it means we would have nothing to have and more of us would be forced to go and do crime. So those are some of the reasons we are here for this whole week.
Okay. Kosi, Sir Atolo, we wish you a very, very prosperous and strategic five years as the chairperson of the National Traditional Leadership in the country. Thank you so much for joining Parliament Television.
No, really.
Really, Buhara. There was Kosi Siatolo talking to us about the role of traditional leadership in caving crime in communities as well as generally the role of traditional leadership. We will be crossing to the National Assembly at 2 o'clock where the deputy president will be answering questions to the National Assembly. However, let us continue to watch the second session of Taking Parliament to the People 2022 on our social media platform. That is hashtag Parliament of RSA. Just stay tuned.
We are currently at the Ring Road, which is in Louisiana, what, 15? It's a project that started initially, I was to start in 2020, but it started last year. We are happy basically with the progress. The target for the completion is on the 9th of December. We hope that the contractors have given us assurance that they will be meeting the target.
This pipe that you see is an extension of the pipe that is already existing, which is connecting to make sure that there's no water that flows between the community. So we want to take it outside the community. So that's the purpose of this pipe. It's not that, we still have to excavate on the road. So that is done. So I'm confident that we, by the time that we reach to December, we have completed, obviously, but we'll have to note if there are difficulties in terms of rain. So that's the only fear that we have. But also, as I've cited, that some of us SMMEs, or this is the work that was reserved for SMMEs, some of them have not performed well, but we are trying all our means to assist them to make sure that we finish on time.
But there are some challenges where they indicated to us that the challenge is with regard to one particular resident who has a house which is next to the road, who's refusing to move. But also, we made aware that the owner of the house does not have the authority to renovate or alter the house. He has not been authorized to do so. But the municipality is taking up the matter further. But also, there are challenges with the Escom lines, they have been requested to remove them. So basically, I would say we are happy, but we just not happy that it has been, the period has been extended. It was supposed to be a 10-month period. It has now been extended to 6.8 months. We're concerned about that because it means also there will be extra monies that municipality has to pay. We're happy that municipality has also got a maintenance budget to ensure that if there are some defects, firstly, the contractors, the responsible for the period of a year to fix the defects. But beyond that, the municipality has a maintenance budget, they are holding roads.
I'm Sabelo Malunga, Watkazela. I am happy about this project. It's a job that I could do. I know there are issues in that corner. The PLC is not helping. The community is happy. It is happy, it is happy that I could do. Happy, we are happy.
The National Council of Provinces is Taking Parliament to the People of Kwazulu Natal from 14 to 18 November 2022. Taking Parliament to the People is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of parliament, provincial legislatures and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People 2022. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.za. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better.
I'm part of the site visit that has gone to Margate Airport as well as the Ring Road. At Margate Airport, we have seen that there's a potential in terms of the growth of the airport. Currently, it has 35,000 passengers. The aim is to move it to about 85. There are discussions between the Margate Airport, the municipality and the airport company of South Africa, AXA, as well as other stakeholders such as the Department of Transport in the province as well as the Department of Transport National to come in and assist the airport. It is located in a strategic area in terms of tourism, but also it doesn't only assist Rain Kunyeni municipality or Ugu district municipalities. It also assists provinces such as Eastern Cape, areas such as Misana, Lusikisiggi, Flexda, our friends on district municipalities. Because those municipalities, people from those municipalities have to go to King Shaga Airport because the Icelandic airport is too far for them. So also, the King Shaga Airport is too far for them. But now with this one, the Margate Airport, it will assist them to alleviate the challenges that they face in terms of airport to King Shaga Airport. So we are really looking forward to this new airport.
My name is Shilanda van Reinsberg. I'm the manager aviation services employed by Rain Kunyeni municipality, from which our special airport is very heartwarming to me as part of the municipality. Soon, within two months, we realized what big demand there is from our region to fly to Awortambo. And gradually, the airline introduced more daily flights, which ended up at twice a week, then three times a week for two months. And then thereafter, I realized, no, we need to have daily flights from Awortambo to Margate due to the booming demand that we experienced at that time. I can however also mention, Margate Airport is very a seasonal airport. Although we are throughout the year constantly busy, during public holidays, school holidays, long weekends, we receive extra flights coming to the airport, people visiting this tourist destination and then whereby the scheduled flight service provided by CEMED, they would then have two flights per day.
Also, we have noted there are some challenges, particularly that relate to non-compliance. Very concerned, it's a matter that will also be taken up. We make a recommendation to the chairperson of the committee to invite CAA so that they tell us what is it that, how they could assist the airport to comply with these processes that govern the aviation industry.
The National Council of Provinces is Taking Parliament to the People of Kwazulu Natal from 14 to 18 November 2022. Taking Parliament to the People is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of parliament, provincial legislatures and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People 2022. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.za. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better.
I'm going to say, 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 we support this decision that I'm going to say, 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 I'm going to say.
Bestela, Ewa 2, Oba Bekonokanda Kanda, for Uklima. We are also asking for Oba Bekona, e-trainings, ezenzuayo, for e-farmers, for abandabachyalayo, by training because we have a lot of people that are staying emakaya with no training, but imichlaba ikona. We also want to ask, Oba Ewa 11, sipegelelo nati, ezenzo ozotyala, sipegelu imichlaba and o-government to contribute into that, e-trainello abantu. Thank you so much and I hope for many opportunities to pass indaba. Yom Motuana Chonile, that has not even been addressed here. Your party station has shown deliberately as bonwayo enteleen. Tomorrow, we are burying a child because of that. Thank you.
Number three, thank you, sis.
I fundo ezenzuayo, kule richin yetu, as alignment in the job market to address unemployment. Because if e-education singai addressi, ogu tayhamsane in the job market, then sizo kubegasibaningking.
I'm going to say, 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 I'm going to say. 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 I'm going to say, I'm going to say.
The National Council of Provinces is Taking Parliament to the People of Kwazulu Natal from 14 to 18 November 2022. Taking Parliament to the People is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of parliament, provincial legislatures and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People 2022. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.za. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say. 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 I'm going to say, I'm going to say.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say. Ewa 34, Kwa News, mapantso, obabu kantse ilunza. Tye na bestela etiel. Elzoso, I'm going to say, 1084. Liza, you're going to say, 1000. We're section yes Billy, I'm going to say, Kwa News. I'm going to say, Kwa News. I'm going to say, Kwa News. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. I can begi, magnetan tobo. I'm a pastor, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. Bestela, I'm going to say, Kwa News. I'm going to say, Kwa News. Pinda, puti, I'm going to say, e-parking ento zokjima, for yuti. I'm going to say, e-parking ento zokjima, ente mzokjima. I'm going to say, I'm a bohol, ezkolene. I'm going to say, I'm a man, ezkolene. I'm going to say, I'm going to say. 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 I'm going to say, I'm going to say.
The National Council of Provinces is Taking Parliament to the People of Kwazulu Natal from 14 to 18 November 2022. Taking Parliament to the People is a flagship program of the National Council of Provinces and fulfills the mandate to conduct oversight and to facilitate public participation in parliament processes. During the program, delegations consisting of members of parliament, provincial legislatures and local municipalities will visit various sites and hold public meetings where members of the public are given the opportunity to draw the executive's attention to challenges they experience with regards to service delivery. Follow Parliament on social media for more information on Taking Parliament to the People 2022. Stay updated by visiting our website at www-parliament.gov.za. Parliament, following up on our commitments to the people, making your future work better.
We are now joined by the Minister of Small Business Development, May Stella Indabeni. May, welcome.
Thank you, Sheli, and good afternoon to all the viewers in their respective areas.
Yes, ma'am. Today, it was, you know, a discussion about business, transport, you know, economic issues. What are these people saying inside there?
Well, I think, Sheli, what the people of Ugu are raising are matters that are very critical towards the economic development of this area. Firstly, if there isn't good road infrastructure, it impacts on businesses. Therefore, whether you're an existing business or an aspirant business person is going to affect you. Those are the things that are complaining about in terms of the infrastructure. They did raise issues around water, which fortunately, we were advised that Minister Mkunu is already dealing with those whilst Minister Balula is also looking at the road issues whilst the province also is trying to assist. So they are saying, Minister, these are the things that would like to be addressed. But Minister, from your side as the Department of Small Business Development, we do get people who say we must pay 10% for us to access services. Which again, Sheli, we explained, there's no such, if you are paying for funding from Sifa, we never ask for 10%. Yes, there was a 10% contribution that was expected from those that are in corporatives because we... because we provide seventy percent as a grant. If you are borrowing fifteen million as a co-op, we say seventy percent of that is the grant, you only pay thirty percent. And we just needed to get a sense that a person is committed to the business because people do take government money and they don't pay it back. But at the center of that are the farmers who are saying, we are doing all of this, whether we're in banana, but the trade laws are allowing other people outside South Africa to come and take the market that we consume. Prices have been dropped and now as the local farmers, they do not have enough space to participate and they are scared that their businesses are gonna be closed. Once their businesses are closed, it means people are gonna lose jobs. And these are things that we are saying collectively as government, we must look at to say whilst we are open for investment and allowing everyone, but how do we protect the local investment that has been made by the people that we have?
Something that I really wanted to 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 find out from you because, you know, some eh ma- ma'am uwenya, one of our house chairpersons went to a eh banana plant yesterday. Eh i i i i ka igecha, she went to an igecha, you know, eh farm, where the the farmers, they are saying that there are there is there are trucks coming into South Africa with lots and lots of bananas, selling them at a lower cost to theirs, which is compromising them. Is there any eh any policies, any rules, you know, to assist the locals? Not to say that the 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 foreign um also business people may not come in?
Well, one of the things that we have to look at, for example, who's allowed to trade in South Africa? It's a question that people have been asking when they complain about the influx of illegal eh of foreign illegal traders. The the Immigration Act is very clear as per the amendments by the Minister of Trade and Industry and Home Affairs to say at least for one to get a business visa, if you are a foreigner, you must be prepared to invest at least five million renz. Minister Massey went further this year to issue a policy on national national labor and immigration. And in that policy, we have identified certain sectors that must be reserved for South Africans. Now, South Africa, part of the global world, South Africa that also trades with other countries. But at the center of it is to say, how do we protect the domestic investment? All countries do this and when we do it, it's not xenophobic. It's to say, how do we protect the jobs? Because we have a responsibility towards the locals that are continuing to vote and pay taxes for South Africa. We are engaging the Minister of Trade and Industry in terms of the trade regulations that are set in place. But at the center of it is the alignment of the economic strategies, both at the local level, the L E D strategy that they're talking about, at the provincial level and the national level. Once we then agree that these are the growth-driving sectors in KwaZulu-Natal, all of us ought to be committed to say, let's agree whatever percentage that must be protected. Whilst on my side, as the minister responsible for small business development, we engage the retailers to say pick and pay, shop right, bullwares when you buy, at least this percentage ought to be bought from the locals. And that requires alignment in terms of the policy from local to national and we are continuing to engage with that. Of course, it's not a matter that is finalized, but hopefully by the time the president goes to the sauna failing which, when I go to the budget vote, we would have something tangible to report on.
Yes, and and just talking about that also, ma'am, is that just in in eh in the nearest future eh or in 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 previously also, you in in few weeks or months ago, you came to this Ugu district, you know, to address issues and and businesses who were affected by the 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 floods. Just can you give us just a eh eh glimpse of what you were doing there and who benefited and how many? If you have the numbers, you still remember the numbers?
Actually, it was two weeks back, on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of October. We came here to, of course, provide support eh towards the small businesses that had applied eh from our 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 reserves. Here in this district, we have dispersed about fifteen million plus. And of course, specifically here in Rain GoNeni, it was about two point one with two point one million renz that we dispersed. That's only for formal businesses. On the small business, the informal traders, we distributed eh to sixty-six businesses from Rain GoNeni, which eh you can calculate was each eh informal trader gets about ten thousand renz support or whatever equipment that is worth ten thousand renz. And this we are doing because we're saying businesses must survive. Businesses must continue to trade irrespective of the challenges that they went through. And this is why we are saying ours is to make sure that we work hand in hand with our business people. The informal traders that I spoke about, they get ten thousand worth support, but we are encouraging them when they grow to tap into the TRAP funds, which go up to one million renz. And the department is looking at that to say, how do we review? Because people have been complaining about the criterion that we have set. So now we're trying to say, how do we relax? Although we've tried to relax, but people continue to complain. We do see it on the uptake because we're not doing well in terms of TRAP. So we said even yesterday with the D G after the summit that we had, to say, there's a need for us to review because it is not about us setting a criteria that does not talk to the market. Our market are small businesses, whether formal or informal, therefore everything that we do, until we have helped them, helped them to meet the requirements that we make, let's respond to what they have and who they are.
And eh as well, ma'am, what about the ladies, the women out there? Because we always say women must contribute into the economy, we women need this thing. Ah ah how is the department doing in that front?
We made a commitment of procuring at least forty percent from women-owned businesses. And that, I know on the disbursement that SIFAR has done, we were sitting at thirty-eight percent eh in the last quarter, which means we're closer to the forty percent that we're talking about. Thus, on the services, the funds that we provide. Because you are not going to say women must participate meaningfully in the economy if you're not supporting them. We have a program that's called She Trades Program, which is in partnership with I F C in order to assist women-owned businesses. We've traveled the continent, we've been outside South Africa, Saudi Arabia, we've gone to Tanzania with women who are owning businesses, them for them to understand how trade is done outside South Africa, but also to showcase and forge networks. And indeed, I can say proudly to say they are telling great stories, they're doing lots of work. If you missed out on our awards, I don't know if you watched, our awards on Sunday, lots of women got to be recognized for the contribution they made. Yesterday, we issued lots of money again when others were pitching for funding with a woman from Eastern Cape named Namtla, who got eh an award of one million renz. And these are black women from townships and rural areas. If you go to Rustenbeck, we have great stories. We are touching everyone in the little corners. But of course, it is about the limitations that we have on the budget. We do hope that as we continue to engage with our partners, we can be able to increase this game.
Yes, I wanted to say, we are in Rain GoNeni, eh local municipality or Ugu district in K Z N. But you we we shouldn't forget that you are here with a national cap. How is eh eh small business development eh doing nationally?
Nationally, we, as the department first, let me get started. Department, yes. We're doing fairly well. And as I said, I think the challenge is on the resources that we have. Hence, we took a a different approach to say through the strategy that we've developed, let's work on the ecosystem. If you look at the existing corporates that we have versus their compliance towards the Triple B Act on the E S Ts, all big companies are supposed to contribute three percent of their turnover to towards E S T. And when we did eh the the estimations, it we were talking about thirty billion renz on that is sitting with big corporates, underutilized, ten billion renz with air sources. Now, we said whilst we complaining that we don't have enough budget from eh Minister of Finance, but at least if we join hands with the industry, we're able to then leverage on the resources that are there. That's about forty billion that we're talking about. And this is what we did from Monday to yesterday, wherein we're saying, here is a strategy that we have all developed. Now, how do we then allocate responsibilities for each and every sector? And we got the corporates pledging their support to say, government, if we bring twenty million to assist, bring twenty million too. And that's the partnership agreement that we're signing, but hey, I can't blow that weight until it happens.
Yeah, you may. I I like that, Minister. But um just just in closing, what is your overview? Parliament, National Council of Provinces, you know, has got this program or a flagship program, Taking Parliament to the People. Where people are getting a chance to raise their issues? You now know where in 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 a certain municipality, in a certain farm and so on, that people are need assistance in terms of their businesses. What is your view about this flagship program?
I think this is a very important flagship program. People must hear what Parliament says. At the same time, Parliament must hear what are people's concerns. Parliament is the one that makes legislations. If you go to the small business ecosystem, they will call